Good evening. My call to order this August 12th, 2025, meeting of the Blair Mayor and City Council. I am Mindy Ralphson, Mayor of Blair, and I am pleased to have joined us this evening. This is a public meeting and you are part of the process. I encourage you to participate, ask questions, and share your thoughts. I want you to feel comfortable and I will do everything that I can to make sure that your voice is heard. We do have several rules to help us proceed with the meeting and I ask that you please keep them in mind. Please, if you have a cell phone, turn it off. If you need to take a call, step outside the chamber. When you wish to speak, simply raise your hand and I will acknowledge you if you can come forward to the podium. Friend or dealer, our city clerk must record who you are, so please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address. Keep your remarks brief, about three minutes, so that others have the opportunity to speak, and please direct your remarks to either myself, the City Council, or to our city staff. A copy of the Open Meetings Act has been posted by both exits. And before we do roll call this evening, I did want to do a shout out to our community. After the storm on Saturday morning, I was so immensely proud of our community, from everyone, from our 911 dispatch, to our Blair PD, our Sheriff's Department, our Blair Volunteer Park and Rescue, our mutual aid partners in our community, and the City of Blair employees. We had people show up to help our citizens when their own basements were filling full of water. And all their efforts should be complimented, so when you see them, please take the time to thank them. We will go on with the roll call of members this evening. Mayor?
Present.
Paulson?
Here.
Wong?
Here.
Wu?
There.
Willis?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Fletcher?
Yep.
Hyphel?
Here.
All members are present. Thank you. Would please stand and join me for the side of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, approve the consent agenda.
Some of them.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Please put it to your vote. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Item number five, consider resolution 2025-72, accepting the estimate from Pearson's painting to prepare Washington Street benches for downtown art and FBLA project. Mr. Heaton.
Good evening, Mayor, hello. Thank you. The first item tonight is resolution 2025-72. If council members, a few weeks ago, we were approached by the FBLA groups at Blair High School about doing some service projects around the community. And one of the projects that we kind of focused on or centered on was kind of expanding on the Art Valley project and having the students paint murals on the benches along Washington Street. I believe the council approved some funds for paint for the students a few meetings ago, excuse me. Staff was asked at the time then to get prices or bids to have the benches prepared. We've reached out to a couple of different companies and got a bid back for Pearson's painting in an amount of $10,500. There are, Sophia, our intern, correct me if I'm wrong, but 25 benches down Main Street or Washington Street. So Pearson's painting will take up the benches, take them in, sandblast them, and then paint all the metalwork nice blue black, and all the slats will be light gray, white primer color, so they'll have a clean slate to kind of start the murals on. As I noted here, the funds for these will come out of the hotel motel tax. There's funds in there, those are the funds kind of raised through those occupation taxes to use for these special projects to benefit the community. Any questions?
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Having none, did finance committee meet any lists?
Yes, we did. We felt that it's a great idea, it's going to lighten up the look of the downtown, so there's no other questions. I would like to introduce our motion 2025-72.
Resolution number 2025-72 was introduced by council member Clark, accepting the estimate from Pearson's painting to prepare Washington Street benches for downtown art FBLA project.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-72 as presented.
Sure.
We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number 2025-72. Please register below. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Item number six, consider approving the proposed relocation of the Blair Dog Park from Stire Park to Black Elk and Nyhard Park. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, council members. CJ and I are going to kind of tag team this a little bit tonight. Let me start off by simply saying, we know that we've got several individuals that I think are here with us tonight that want to talk about this. This has been kind of a rapidly changing, potentially still changing scenario, so I guess my encouragement upfront is for you to be willing to take testimony tonight, to allow everyone to share their thoughts and opinions, but to make a decision right now that you're not going to act on this item tonight, but go ahead and postpone this, at least until the next meeting, maybe even beyond if there's other additional information that you desire to have. CJ is going to talk a little bit about some cost estimates that we had, both on the original design that was going to be at Stire Park, as well as now the potential new sites up here at Black Elk down on Adams Street. We were intending, on a nice slow Monday and Tuesday, to collect a little bit more of that information for you for tonight. Obviously, the weekend happened and we haven't had any time to be able to work on that. And so, again, if you postponed for no other reason than we want to be able to get a little bit further information to you. So Aaron, if you want to bring up that file I told you about, I've got some pictures that I just took this afternoon. So he's going to search here real quick if I pop his line. But yeah, same folder, yep, go in there. All right, and to start with Adam Street 1, and you might just open it up, whatever photo image thing it comes up with, expand it. Now, this is one of those panoramic videos, and so if you zoom in on it a little bit, lower right-hand corner, you can zoom in, yeah, and then scroll left and right a little bit. So this is the park that's located down on Adams Street. And the whole reason why we started thinking a little bit about a different location is because we'd receive some feedback, some from you as council members and some from just other citizens, that because of the location at Stire Park, it was forcing us to spend a large amount of money on the concrete work that needed to be done, so that you had an ADA accessible ramp just to be able to get up into the dog park area. And so the question was, surely, can't you find a different place in town that would be easier to actually construct the park and allow people to get into it? This had been generally a location that had been talked about before, and so we looked a little bit more in depth at it. Obviously, as you scroll over to the left-hand side there, there's parking that's along that particular area. As you scroll back to the right, there is a playground area there right now. Now, it's just got sand gravel mixed on the base, which is not the kind of base that we would be putting in today, but it is a playground area that could have more improvements done in the future. Whenever you're able to mix multiple uses, playgrounds for young kids, maybe a dog park area for, you know, exercising the dog at the same time, there's kind of some multipurpose benefits in being able to do that, so this seemed to make sense. Scroll a little bit more to the right, you can see a picnic table there. Yeah, and then this one, you may have to flip it upside down. So this is a view kind of from farther back on the left-hand side, or I guess it would be the eastern side, looking out into the general area. You know, slightly rolling, the sloping topography in this particular area, but you get some shade, some open area. We would end up with, again, typically, when you have a dog park, you're going to have two larger areas. One's going to be for small dogs, the other one's going to be for all dogs, they call it, not necessarily large. Sometimes smaller dogs enjoy being around larger dogs as well, but other times, small dogs prefer to be just with other smaller dogs. So this might be over in the small dog area with maybe the large dog area over on the other side. So this was the Adams Street. Again, I'm going to allow CJ to talk a little bit more about some of the cost estimates that we had for that. And I'm sure, like I said, we'll get some public testimony regarding this particular site. But if you want to go on, Aaron, in the last few days, we've been talking about other locations that might also be feasible, that you might want to think a little bit more about. And as I was just doing kind of aerial overview of the town, looking for different locations, it kind of really hit me, well, we do have this area that's just immediately south of the elevated water tower that's here up at Black Elk, Nyhard Park, and the Tower of the Four Winds. So we're going to look at it. This happens to be the path that begins to go back in that direction. And so you park in the regular normal parking area for Black Elk, Nyhard Park, and then take the walkable path off to the south side of the tower. Come on to the next picture, Aaron. As you head down that path, you come to this little bench, which has been, you know, it's an honorary bench, and there's a magnet line that's next to it. But this particular location could be a sidewalk then that would head back into that Sallyport area. And just for the sake of everyone understanding, they call it a Sallyport because it's kind of the entryway as you go into the gated area, where then you can either go to the small dog side or to the all dog side, but it's kind of a common entry area. So there'd be a path that would head up in that area. And once you get back in there a little bit, this path, or this whole area, is relatively flat. So obviously, any concrete work that we'd have to do, any path or any walking paths back into that would be fairly easy to pour, easy to meet all the ADA requirements for ramps and things like that. Next one, Aaron, is another panoramic view. So it goes from all the way to the far left to the far right, but you can really get a sense of how level this whole area is, and yet there's trees scattered throughout, so really good shade. One of the things we've talked about doing is to be able to have one or two benches or picnic tables scattered inside the dog park area, so you could go in with your dog if you wanted to sit in there and eat lunch while your dog's running around or something like that. Lots of areas that we could do that inside this area. Next picture, Aaron, continues on this walking path that's already around the outside, and I guess my thought was, if this was a location that you were interested in, we wouldn't necessarily put the exterior fence right up next to the walking path. It could be on the inside, maybe even inside of a tree, so that those who are simply walking the path still feel like it's an enjoyable area. And yet, that fenced area would be encompassing a lot of this. As you get to the south side of this walking area, there's another bench underneath this tree, a dedicated one. That would probably be on the outside again of the fenced area, so the fence would be behind that tree. Next picture, you continue to walk around this path. This is now on kind of the northwest corner of this walking path, which continues all the way around the elevated tower. Another honorary bench. What you can see, though, is there's already a fence that's around the tower itself. And so we actually saved some money by not having to put all of the perimeter fence around, because some of it's there already. And again, you know, fairly flat in this particular area. Next picture, Aaron, goes up a little bit closer, gives you, again, kind of a panoramic view of how level this whole area is. Generally speaking, you usually have the small dog area a little smaller than the all dog area would be. Exactly how we lay that out from the other side could yet be determined. Next picture, again, seeing the fence. One thing we would have to accommodate is, this is the primary gate area that gets into our elevated water tank. And that big tank there, it does have, what, many gallons?
A half.
A half a man, okay. And we're making some improvements to that with a pump house that's located over by, closer to where the shelter is located. So this is going to continue to be, you know, an important part of our water infrastructure for the City of Blair, and yet, one of the advantages, it's isolated a little bit farther away from some of the houses, takes advantage of the parking that's already there, relatively easy to be able to construct. Like I said, the walking trails do it. And last picture, I think, Aaron, might be one more in there, maybe not. That may be it, okay, that's it. So that's just another site to consider. So to me, again, another reason why you may want to just postpone an actual final decision on this for tonight, to the next meeting, give us an opportunity to maybe do some cost estimates for this location as well, and if you have other locations around town, or if the citizens do, we're open to that. Now, I'll let you know that committees for years have been looking at multiple spots around town. I think the last list I saw showed 14 or 15 different locations that have been considered at one time or another. All of them have pros and cons. Some of them, maybe on the appearance, the upfront appearance, look like it would be possible, but there may be a reason that a lot of people don't understand that would somewhat prohibit it. One of the ones that I know was mentioned is Optimus Park, that's on the river. When you take the park itself, the parking area, the non-hard surface parking area, which could be hard surface someday in the future, that does get used at times for overflow parking, when you consider the two intake facilities that the city has, there's a potential for an impound lot down in that particular area. And then on the far northern side is kind of what looks like an open field, but that's a dedicated wetlands area. It may not always look wet, but it's a dedicated wetlands area because the city had to do a land swap because of a previous public works project that was done years ago. And as far as the feds are concerned, that's going to be a wetlands area forever, and we can't touch it. We can't put anything in that particular area. So, like I said, sometimes there's areas that just on the surface appear to be potential that really aren't for one reason or another. CJ, why don't you come talk a little bit more about this contrast between Black Elk and Stire Park and the cause, and then we'll open up to the rest of the call.
Thank you.
Aaron, you might go into the power, because I think I got things in there. You can put it right here for me. Thank you, Aaron. So Phil was kind of mentioning what's kind of sparked this interest in looking at other sites. I know the park board, I've looked at over a dozen sites over the last few years. I think the council has contemplated other sites, and had originally kind of settled on the site at Stire Park. In conversations with the engineering firm, there was estimates as high as half a million dollars just in concrete work to access the dog park. The site at Stire Park is very steep. It would require two brand-new ADA parking stalls, an expansion of the current parking, and then several switchbacks just to get to it. So this is the site at Stire Park. So this is in the corner of 17th and Lafayette Street, just up from the lower shelter at Stire Park, up from the playground. All of this darker shaded zigzag work is a series of switchbacks for ADA ramps just to access the park. And so, in the spirit of trying to save money and be just as efficient as possible with our resources, we started looking at other areas. One option was this lower area at Black Elk. As you can tell, I'm not a licensed engineer. So apologize for the Microsoft Paint drawings, but essentially, this is that area Phil had pictures of. It's a much simpler sidewalk design. It's work that our public work crews could do, their six-foot sidewalk. It's pretty straightforward, fairly level to get to it. The only work that I think that we would actually have to hire out would be the fencing at this site, and then possibly a boring contractor to help punch the water line under the street. Water is available at the street here. Stire Park, water is about two blocks away to get water to that location. Stire Park also has electricity that has to be moved. But then, as Phil mentioned, this has kind of been a moving thing, and we have hoped to dig into it a little bit more as we had better weather. But we started looking at another option in Black Elk, which was the other area that Phil had pictures of. So for all familiar with Black Elk, Nyhard Park, the big parking lot, this littler circle building, that is the park shelter. And then this is the Tower of the Four Winds, and then our elevated water, or in-ground water storage tank. So in general, very generally speaking, because we've not had time to really put a tape measure on this yet, we'd be looking at fencing off, you know, the majority of this area south of the water tower. Now, as Phil mentioned, there's a 10-foot bike trail that loops that whole area right now. We'd probably pull that fence in off a little bit, so the dogs aren't, you know, right there at the walking path. And so as Phil mentioned, we're going to recommend to postpone this for now to give us some more time and get some better details. There were open to other options. My intent is to get you some good numbers on each aspect of at least these three locations. I'm, you know, very familiar with this area. This sidewalk would provide great access to get there, and I think we'd be looking at minimal concrete work that, again, our guys could do. So very likely on this site would be a fencing contractor to put the fence in, put the gates in. Water and restroom are available, and, you know, seasonally, and the bathrooms. There was some discussion about possibly using some of this area around the shelters. It does drop off pretty quick on both sides, if you're familiar with that. There's also a lot of people that like to sit in the shelter and look at the Tower of the Four Winds, so we didn't want to take up that spot. And as Phil had mentioned, we're going to be doing, probably in the next month or so, we plan to come to you with a proposal to expand the pumping facility at Black Elk. Not many people might be aware, but there is a pump house right here in the corner next to the cell phone towers that helps supply all the water to that, basically the west side of town. We're looking at adding a third pump, the electric pump, it's probably a backup generator, and all of those utilities kind of run down through here to connect to the water tower. So it doesn't look like it from its face value, but it's congested area. Anything I can bring in, Phil, or any questions from the council?
Would this have to move further to park board again?
We probably would, once we get these narrowed down, since we, you know, kind of, I mentioned Phil earlier, I think this has been talked about for years, it's been, you know, mulled over, but I don't know if we've ever had a real focus process to it, like we were going out, it's like, better to set back and do it right.
I think especially if your ultimate decision as the council is try again, then yeah, we'll take it.
Was this location identified, the south tower?
Yes, it was in that list, I believe I shared it on Spark with everybody late this afternoon, and there was a list that Christie Brown put together. And one thing to note, so everybody knows, is that the Mindy Joe Foundation has raised, I think to date, over $100,000, and I'm sure they'll be speaking to you later. Sorry, our intent, I guess, or part of our goal, is to try to utilize as much of those funds as possible, but also keep this cost down so that they can put in extra amenities, so we have more than just a fence and, you know, a green space, so people can turn their dogs out and run. We want to be able to put features in there for the dogs and for the owners, so. Any questions?
Yeah. I'd like to propose for any of the locations, especially if there's going to be walking areas around them, that the fencing be set back far enough to where if someone else is walking down, and a dog runs up to the fence, as they're likely to do, and people walk by and give a little hello, that it's not too close to where someone doesn't feel unsafe. Secondly, regardless of any location, I'd like it to be, really with any new park facility we put in, ability to have cameras placed in as it's created, so we can avoid any of the, try to avoid some of these vandalism problems that we've had.
Just so the council understand, is aware, we're planning on a series of calls, like to paint links, so it looks nice, hopefully, so the dogs where they need to be.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I open it up to public, I think it should be noted that discussions of a dog park and the request from the community has been ongoing for many, many years. In fact, I think Frank, you might be the only one that's on council right now that has heard all of these. No offense, Frank, but we have a very new council, so we're just kind of getting up to speed here, but this is not, this is not something new. This has been ongoing for quite some time. So with that, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Christie.
Hello. Christie Brown, are you on deals? They're June 34, Crossweb. I just wanted to make a few comments, because I know there are new members, just so you're aware of what my foundation has been doing. For the last four and a half years, we've been raising money for this dog park. We have nine members on our board, we meet every month, and, you know, just decide if we're going to apply for a grant, or, you know, we have two fundraisers every year to talk about what we're going to do for the fundraisers. We've done this now for four and a half years, and as of today, I went, we are with the, we're becoming a huge community foundation, so that's where all of our money goes until we need it. So I went up there today, and as of today, we have $105,000, $155.15 in our account. So that is plenty to cover a dog park at Black Elk. However, at Stire, there's no way that we could, with the cost of the concrete we deal with. So I just wanted you, the members, to be aware of what we're doing and going to continue doing. This isn't a project that we're just going to drop after it's built. We're going to be there to replace the equipment and help the city in any way we can. And we have it, when my husband and I are gone, we have some, my niece to take over for us, so it's not something that's going to, you know, once we're gone, be abandoned. So it's something ongoing, and I just wanted you to know that. Have any questions for me?
Are you open to either or location up in Nyhard, or just the lower one? I kind of like the upper one, where it's more level, not close to the playground, better concrete parking.
As long as it's out there at Black Elk, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Good evening. Betsy Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, 1235 Pinder Drive. I should mention that Christie and myself are on park board, and as you heard this evening, we've been working on this for a very long time. The park board represents everybody who lives in Blair, no matter where you live, and our intent is to create a park system that is for everybody. It doesn't matter where you live. But we also don't want to create problems in our community by putting something in that someone doesn't look. That's not our intent. We want to make this very copacetic, I don't know if you like that word. So with the, at our last park board meeting, this new site was brought up as an alternative to keep the cost down, and it was very favorable. Obviously, because of the lack of elevation, or uneven elevation, it made it very cost-effective, to the point where we do believe we can pay for this out of the funds that the foundation has raised. Having said that, that Having said that, that area of town is a very nice neighborhood, and I can understand that there would be concerns over entities coming into the park that's different from what's there right now. So I have, when you're considering this location, and I have to say, the new location only came to us, like, in the last two days. So it's new to all of us, and it's obviously one that is, we're very open to consider. But with the location on Adams Street, understanding that it's a very nice neighborhood, we were willing to entertain upgrading the fencing, so it's not a chain link fence. It's one that would be fitting for the homes that are in that area, an upgraded fencing. I will also say that that location, out of all the locations, that one probably is the, the most accessible for someone that might be in a wheelchair because of, again, the lack of changing elevation. Today I was up there and looked at it again, and there's a tremendous amount of erosion that has with the torrential rains that we've just had. Being the gardener, the volunteer gardener for the city, my training has said that we could put a bioswale in up there, which, if bioswale is an environmental engineered way of slowing the flow of water down, and when it's dry, the plants in there survive without water, and when there's a lot of moisture, plants, again, they survive, depending on what you plant there, and it's the placement of rocks. It's a, becomes an architectural feature as well as a feature to slow down the water so that you don't have runoff to the degree that we have it as of today. So I guess the points are, number one, we would upgrade the fencing for the Adams Street location. We could put the bioswale in to control any erosion. The handicap accessibility is probably the best, and it's paid for. And I want to say that Mindy and her foundation, this isn't where they got fifty thousand dollars from an organization. This is a ten-dollar donation here, a twenty-dollar donation here. This is hundreds and hundreds of people that have donated money. We're interested in a dog park, and we are very open to relocating it to another area. Obviously, we like the area that we brought before you tonight, but we are open to another area. We just want to see this project move ahead. So we thank you for your understanding and your support in helping us get this project underway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Other comments from the public?
Hello, Tammy Kavanaugh, T-A-M-M-Y, last name K-A, V is in Victor, A-N is in Nancy, A-U-G-H, nine twenty-three Stone Creek Drive. Good evening, thank you all for your time, for your work, because I know this probably isn't always fun, but in the last forty-eight probably months, I have earned literally a PhD in dog laws, dog parks, liability, who's liable, who's not liable, and I just wanted to bring that forward. I really don't have a PhD in dog laws, but I feel like I do. That said, there's tons and tons of loopholes for liability for the city and the taxpayers of Blair. And regardless if you want the dog park or you don't want the dog park, we have to look at just the facts, the laws, and the liability to all of us. Chapter six of our code is the only one I know of, at least forty-eight months ago, that's all we had, for dog laws. It was in section six, subsections one hundred through one hundred and thirty-nine, and that was for the city of Blair. And it was actually under the police regulations, which was kind of interesting in and of itself. And it was really just kind of a throw in some stuff to make it look like we have rules and regulations. I think we should have a lot more, honestly, and I certainly think we should if we're going to have a dog park. The rules make it clear, like even for citizens here of Blair, we have six months to get our dogs vaccinated and to get them registered with the city. If you open a dog park, we don't have any rules or regulations on dog parks that I can find for the city of Blair. And in light of that, I feel like we've put the cart way ahead of the horse. I think in theory it's a lovely idea, and it obviously a great memory to some family members and to someone who clearly loves or probably loved dogs. But without guidelines on dog parks, I don't know how we move forward first. With no regulations and guidelines, I feel as though it's a recipe for disaster before we get started, and more importantly, the liability and lawsuits for the city that will come forward. Some of the dog parks that I have looked at over the last two years, they have like specific laws within their city code regarding aggressive dogs. They have rules on small dogs, large dogs. They have guidelines as to if your dog has to be registered with the city. Does your dog have to be vaccinated, which obviously we would want that. But many of the Omaha and surrounding metro areas, especially people with aggressive dogs, will look for small towns like this with no regulations and no laws in their dog parks because most of the bigger cities have it controlled so that there are many breeds that aren't allowed in the dog parks. I feel without some kind of guidelines from the city and something very strict concerning that, I think we're opening up to all kinds of lawsuits, because who's going to prevent the aggressive dogs from coming in and attacking? And the other thing too is, are we going to let everybody bring their dogs here? Or is this just a dog park for the citizens of Blair and their friends, who are their guests? Who will man and enforce the vaccinations and what dogs will be allowed? Many dog parks restrict certain breeds, which I already talked about. When asked why this location was selected, the only answer I've been able to get, which I haven't done a lot of asking, I'll be very honest, was that we had the money. We had the money, we had a hundred thousand dollars, it was free to the taxpayers, and we needed to do it because it's been there for a while. That hundred thousand dollars is great, but rules, regulations, enforcement, upkeep, repair, and most importantly, the liability that comes with that dog park to all the citizens of Blair. It's not going to go to, unless you, I don't know, unless you have some kind of contract that you want set up with the memorial fund, that they're going to handle all of that. But I assure you, there will be liability on the city. So we got to get our ducks in a row before we just willy-nilly put this up. Some cities had their own insurance specific for the dog parks due to the additional liability, kind of like people with their jewelry, because it's such a high and hot spot for liability issues to come back. Does the city need specific insurance for dog parks and liability? I don't know. Do we need a disclaimer in our regulations that says we're going to have nothing to do with anybody who gets bit or anything else? If the fence gets a hole, and somebody mentioned the erosion, the erosion is excessive off that hill. I mean, it's excessive. So let's say we get the fence up and the dogs get a hole underneath in the spot that's currently there. Who's liable when that dog gets out without any rules or regulations? And that park, it's not your normal park. That park is filled only with babies and kids under the age of five. So I don't know the answers to the questions, I don't, because I didn't have time and I didn't look them up. But from a legal and fiscal perspective, I just find it concerning that we don't have more things in order before we start erecting the fence or finding the fence. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe you all have it somewhere and I couldn't find it, I don't know. I think there's going to be a lot of maintenance that's going to go into a dog park. Putting the dog park up and the money to put it up is the easy part and the cheap part. Maintaining the park and enforcing the dog park, that's where everything else will come in, in my opinion. I just hope that you can reconsider, at least the spot where I call it the baby park is going to be located, because the last thing any of us want to do to include the family with the memorial. We don't want to put up a memorial for a loved one who loves dogs, and then in two or three years be putting up a memorial for some little kid that's attacked by an aggressive dog. And that's the possibility that we don't have our bucks and will. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Heinrich, spelled H-E-I-N-R-I-C-H. I live at ten nineteen Stone Creek Drive. I'd like to preface my talks tonight by saying that I'm a dog walker. I own a dog. I take my dog up to Black Elk and Ny Heart Park. Every morning we have a walk. I am so glad that we are finally getting a dog park. I also want to say that I applaud all the efforts to raise this money. I think this fundraising has been phenomenal, and I am so happy to hear about them. But what I'd like to speak to is the choice of the site for this dog park. I'm concerned about the placement of having a dog park right next to a child's playground that, as Tammy just mentioned, is suited just for children who are young. I mean, if you go past there, the equipment there is for young children. And I go past that dog park, or the playground, every morning, and I often see children there already in the morning. We have children on our street that go down there in the morning, and I've walked at least by eight o'clock, so, you know, it's used. I also drive by the park, or the playground daily, and it is used. And I read in the paper that it is very, it's not used very often. From a perspective of somebody who lives right down the street, it is used, so I want you to know that. I've spent my entire life working with children. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother. I taught for twenty-five years as an educator of small elementary students. Child safety is extremely important to me. I am very concerned about having a dog park yards away from where there are small children playing. I don't know how many of you have visited that park, but I would encourage you to do so. The area that would be used where people are going to park is literally yards from that gravel area where the kids are playing. Now, I know that people hopefully will have their dogs restrained, but getting a dog in and out of a vehicle, I don't know. There could be accidents, it just could happen, and that concerns me very much. Furthermore, I know that not all children like dogs, and they may be afraid of dogs that are right next to their playground, and it could be very, you know, very, and not a good place for them to be playing. On the other hand, there may be children that love dogs, and they might want to run up and put their hands through the fence and try to pet the dog, I don't know. But just having them so close does not sound like a good idea to me. We have taken our dog Bailey to several other dog parks in other towns. I know that they're not always, the dogs are not always socially friendly to each other. It can be a little bit scary to be in close proximity when dogs aren't getting along. I was very happy to hear Phil Green speak, because some of the points that he made were exactly ones that I was going to make. But I think it's important that I just touch on those real briefly, because it's important that you know that we're thinking about those too. When I thought about where else in that park, at Black Elk and Ny Heart Park, could we have a nice dog park? The one that Phil Green just suggested, south of the water tower, seems perfect to me. It is close to, you know, you've got the ADA sidewalks already going right up to it. You've got more parking than you do down, excuse me, down below. You've got water, you've got paths where people are already walking their dogs. It's visible to the public, it's already monitored by local authorities, and there's lighting. It just seems to me perfect. During my morning walks, I often think how lucky we are to have Black Elk and Ny Heart Park. I love that park. It has a shelter that serves for a gathering place for so many people. The monument is known statewide, there are visitors that are often up there taking pictures when I'm walking. There are signs right near the parking lot that highlight the monument, the bike trails, the walking trails, and wouldn't it be perfect to have another sign that says, just right over here is our dog park? It would just be, to me, it would just kind of make that all seem right. We have the Dog Waste Decentacles to promote responsible picking up after your dog, and there's social activity going on. So it seems logical to me that it would be next to these other areas that are used in the park. Without being redundant, too much of this said, I'm really pleased to hear that you might be tabling this tonight or whatever you're going to do with it. But whatever you decide, I plead with you. Think of the child's safety. To me, that is huge. We have a lot of places we can consider. We don't have to consider being right next to this little playground that is so loved by so many little kids. I will close just by saying, please reconsider, and I really respect your opinions, and I hope that you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other comments from the public? I see a hand up there. Go ahead.
Get too busy here, Summer. My name is Lisa Kelly, L-I-S-A-K-E-L-O-Y. My address is three three four eight Adams Street, here in Blair. I can actually see both of these locations from my front door. If I had to advocate, I would advocate on behalf of this location that Phil mentioned, up by the water tower, for all the reasons mentioned by my previous neighbors that I've mentioned. Adams Street is a lovely street, absolutely love it, we've been here for twenty years. And that little park bench right outside the water tower is what basically made my husband decide to move here. So, and I can also tell you that the park is already being used by many, many people for dog work. Our, just for those that are in reference, literally as I mentioned, we see both these locations. So the South Tower entrance, there's a back entrance, that's where most of the local dog walkers go now. That's where I used to walk, ran over the little segway on my feet, and took a shortcut up to those wonderful paths. There is no sidewalk system leading up to the Adams Street Park, and it is right on the road. My fear is having no city sidewalks already, and also in the winter time, because my knowledge of dogs is you still have to walk your dog in winter, and my inclination is this is going to be a four-season park. So getting down our street, from past experience, is not always the easiest in the winter. And I do fear for the children, that we have not in the past had a lot of young children in our neighborhood. That has changed. We have a lot of new families that have moved in, and for those of you who are saying that it's not a used park, you're not there during the day when it is being used. I also am concerned, as I mentioned, we are right there at the entrance to the unofficial dog park. There are many dogs that do get loose, and I've met many of them personally as I'm folding weeds now that I've retired. So just to kind of summarize past concerns, I use a wonderful idea. People are using it already, making an official dog park is just, it just makes common sense. But the Adams Street location is not, even though it may be handicap accessible, and some of you may know I'm kind of an advocate for handicap accessibility, anyway, I don't believe that it is the solution. The Adams Street location, of the two, the South Tower, south of the tower is perfect. And actually, you might even want to consider making an additional pathway that they already use. So I would definitely be willing to help you with that, I can tell you how many dogs come and go on a day basis now. So anyway, I do want to say I am concerned for the safety, and for just, there is not much parking there. I think the paper said there were fifteen or eighteen, no, there's fourteen. Again, we go by it every day. I would like to see it more utilized, but however, I think separating those two locations, having the dog park up higher where there is already ADA compliant sidewalks, trust me, I know that. So, that is my take on it. Good neighbors are wonderful. The dog walkers that are there are already, you know, they're pretty much taking care of our neighborhood and they're keeping an eye out. So, I do have concerns about wildlife. We have actually spotted, we actually have camera footage of a bobcat that likes to frequent our backyard. So, we want to make sure that it's done the right way with studies and basically being surveilled. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lynn Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I also live on Stone Creek, 1040, and I wrote lots of little things down. I feel like I'm at the first day of school here and this is my classroom, a lot bigger. So I'm going to try and pre-studiate a little bit because most of what I just wanted to talk about, as the people have mentioned, I wanted to thank you for listening to all of us and giving us this time. I appreciate that, and I also want to thank the park board members who I know have worked on this for a long time. I, too, have had 10 dogs while I've lived 30 years down there. My dogs have been all over that park. I am a dog lover also, and I am for a dog park. I just think it has to be in the best place. I appreciate all the money that has been raised. Really important, and it needs to be used. I agree with that. I have been at that park so much, it's such a social place on the top of the park. I love the bottom of the park, I just don't think, like others have said, it's not the best place for a dog park. There are always people up there. I always meet people. As others have said, there's lots of parking, there's greatly wide sidewalks, there's bathrooms, there's lights, there's picnic tables, there's benches. So, as far as taxpayer money and the city and maintenance, it's kind of already there. And I understand that down below would be a lot less because it is flat, but I have the same concerns about the playground. I have lived there a long time and, you know, there are cars from all over. Honestly, there's probably more cars that are not from Blair. I always look at the license plates because I'm surprised people find it, because it's not, you have to know it's there to go to that little park on the bottom, which is one of the reasons it's so nice for the families that do come there, because it's small and the equipment is more smaller children and you don't have, it's not like a large park where you have older kids that sometimes are intimidating also to the little ones. So, have a look, let's see if I provide anything. I mean, mostly, I think, again, everyone has kind of said what I wanted to say, and a dog park would be an asset for Blair. I mean, I think it's something that people would love to do, and as they said, people are already up there walking with dogs all the time. They aren't used to going up there and parking and getting their dogs and doing that. So, the suggestion that Phil brought up, I think it's a really, there's a lot of space up there. I think there's a place that it can fit at I Heart, and it will make that park even better. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Any other comments from the public?
One more about the dog park. Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Whitwer. It's S-A-R-A, Whitwer, W-H-I-T-W-E-R. I also live on Stone Creek Drive, specifically 1024. Just wanted to add that I, too, am a dog owner. I'm a mom of three. I have three young children that live on the street, and I think adding a dog park to our community, like many of my neighbors, is a wonderful idea. I simply believe this location on the bottom of the hill just isn't the right fit. Our street is a quiet, family-friendly area where small children, my own included, play outside nearly every day. They were even out there in the rain the other day. According to the CDC, over four and a half million people are bitten by dogs annually, and more than half of those victims are children. I don't want one of those stats to be my own. Excuse me. So, a dog park can always bring unnecessary safety risks, especially right next to a playground where kids naturally run, yell, and move unpredictably. The combination can easily lead to dangerous interactions. Dog parks often draw 500 to 100 visitors a day, and Blair considerably a little bit less, but that's what statistics say. Our street simply isn't built for that kind of volume, which means more congestion, reduced visibility for kids, and parking issues. Noted the 14 parking. There's also the noise factor. Dogs barking can reach 80 to 90 decibels, far above what's healthy for residential peace and obviously kids playing around. Again, I'm not against the idea of a dog park, just the placement. And for the safety piece and well-being of our neighborhood, I urge you to consider a more suitable location.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Having none?
Nope, one more. Not getting before we get to gathering.
Good evening, Mayor Rumpf and council. My name is Dale Haggedorn, H-A-G-D-D-O-R-N. I live at 3304 Adams Street. A lot of what I'm going to say has been said, but just in case, I live right across the street from the proposed dog park. I've been there for, I mean, it's literally 23 yards from my property. I've lived there for 27 years. I have three children and three grandchildren who still use the park today. I strongly disagree with putting a dog park in across the street from my house in our neighborhood or next to a playground where children play. I have three main concerns. First, traffic and parking. Our street is already busy with resident traffic, delivery drivers, contractors, people walking, people riding bikes, and children playing and riding scooters. A dog park could bring a constant flow of cars from all over town and potentially other towns and communities. That means more strangers in the neighborhood and more danger for children and families that live here. Parking will also spill over into our street, and residents will be the ones dealing with that. Secondly, noise. Dog parks aren't always quiet. You'll have dogs barking in the morning, the afternoon, the evening, and sometimes late at night if rules aren't enforced. There's a peaceful, this is a peaceful residential street. That kind of noise, day in and day out, will change the entire field and neighborhood. My porch, my front yard, my windows will be facing a place where there's constant activity. It's just not an occasional event, it's every single day. Thirdly, runoff, drainage, and mud and dirt will be a problem. Phil Green, I think, was at my property today.
Didn't have a chance to get over there today.
Okay. He will see it, but we've got some major drainage issues currently that Phil is going to take a look at, where we've got debris, sand, gravel, mud, tree limbs, dirt, trash, it's all going into my yard and into the trees. This has been an ongoing issue for many years, and I'm just getting tired of cleaning up every year as I get older. Adding a dog park will only make the problem worse because once again, the grass dies from dogs running, digging, pooping, and being on it. We will have exposed dirt and being on a hill that big with water running down it with little sunlight will make things difficult for the grass to regrow, and erosion will start, and I will have more dirt and more mud along the dog waste washing into my property every time we get a shower or storm. Any dog owner knows that the problem is compounded in the winter when dogs pee on the grass, and in the spring the grass is brown and dead, and you have to reseed, replant, and again, certain areas. This is almost inevitable in a dog park. People move to homes in our neighborhood because it's a calm area near a park, not because they want to live across or near a dog park. I'm asking the council to listen to the people who live here year-round, who are the ones who will deal with the traffic, the erosion, the smell, the noise, and the loss of privacy. Please find a location that works for the dog owners, the homeowners, and the kids that are playing at the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? I'm keeping my eyes very open. Only one? Okay. How would council like to proceed?
Make a motion to table?
I think we're going to make a motion to postpone.
Postpone.
Yes, to August 26th. Is any council meeting?
Sure.
With a motion and a second to postpone the dog parks, August 26th. Please press to your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
Thank you. Item has been postponed. Item number seven, consider approving a proposed reallocation of funds originally donated for a used bike pump track. We have Mr. Green. Is Mr. Fulmer here?
He is here. I'll take care of him. I'll kind of kick it off.
Okay, thank you. Actually, we didn't finish, so... Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay.
It's been a long 48 hours. Thank you.
All right, you may proceed.
All right, yeah, so the next item comes from the park board. I'll let Brent kind of go through this, but the long and short of this is, over the last few years, funds have been raised to initially put a pump, a bike pump track in Blair somewhere. Unfortunately, not, my understanding is not enough funds were raised, and so we discussed with the park board over the last couple of months about alternatives to use these funds so they're not just going to go to waste. So I'll let Brent kind of go through what do you like to do with those funds, and then if there's any questions, I can help him answer those.
All right, Brent Fulmer, spelled F-U-L-L-M-E-R, at the 1403 Wright Street. I'm the trail champion and representative Thor, who manages the trail at the Black Elk Park. It's a Black Elk Park Day today, it sounds like. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council, for taking your time tonight to listen to this. We raised, I think it's $40,000, I have a slide that I can pull us up here. So we raised a significant amount of money here to go through and put in a concrete pump track here in the city of Blair, but unfortunately, we needed up to around $100,000 from that, and we weren't able to get the amount of money we needed to get that done due to the grants that we couldn't get for that. Now, to use these funds to the benefit of the community and in the interest of the donors who donated this, I've posed some options for us to use these funds for some things that the city can use. So, the first one is to do a bicycle playground design estimation, so, and to evaluate various sites around the city where we can put this in. This is just for an estimation and for a citing, citing. This won't be to build it, to do anything, it's just to have a consultant come in and do the work to look at where these, where this could go and how it could be put into the city or integrated into the city. A good example where some things have been put in has been, this has been put into Adams Park in Omaha, if you're familiar with that park. So they recently put in a similar piece of infrastructure, basically a playground for bikes, and it's geared towards kids who are about anywhere from five to eight, you know, whoever's riding their bike on, basically. So there's that. And then for some bicycle repair stations to put in around town, about $8,800 to be used for that. The Art Alley Project has a bicycle rack that they like to put in that's a little more artistic, and so they're looking for funds for donations for that, so we're going to put $2,000 for that, and then the remaining funds that we have would be left for seed money for future projects that we have. So that is the goal, what we would do at this. Where the funds came from is kind of listed down below, and the idea would be to use the Keno funds and then the, the, I don't know, Washington County fund issue first, so use those funds up, and then the private funds will be used for future projects. Questions on that? So that's generally what we're trying to do with this. It has been approved and reviewed by the park board already, so it's a little here. I'm trying to accomplish here.
What exactly do the bike repair stations are comprised of?
There's a picture of one right there. Right there, so they consist of various little hand tools that you would need to do basic repairs to a bicycle. They come with a little bicycle pump that sits next to them as well, and they, of course, have a little bicycle stand and computer bike on to repair. So, and they'd be...
The tools are all attached with cables, correct?
They're all attached with cables. Yep, exactly. Yep. Yep, they're usually on little weighted cable, cables that kind of stay in that position right there and stay clean and look good wherever they go. And they'd be located in various locations throughout the city where we have existing bicycle infrastructure, so, yeah.
Do you have listed where are those locations?
Yep, so these are the places we brainstormed with them. There's no reason why they have to go to these particular locations, they could go to different places, but these are the places we looked and put in, so, yeah. Yep. So generation lines, tires, and then, I don't know, those places are concerned with that, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Fulmer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments from the public? Having that, how would council like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve the reallocation of funds originally donated for a used bike pump track to other parks related activities.
Second?
With a motion and a second to approve the reallocation of the funds for the used bike pump track. Please press to your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution 2025-73, approving LD840 application from Little Blossoms Kids Club, located at 2232 Washington Street, to reopen the facility at 1221 Deerfield Boulevard and operate a school-age before-and-after-school program called Kids Academy. Mr. Green?
Thank you, mayor. I am not Mike Brooks, but you'll be coming up there just a second. I thought I'd take the advantage, it has been a little while since we've had an LD840 application, and listening to council members on duty, just thought I would maybe give you a quick overview of what's going on. So again, there is a separate LD840 advisory committee that is part of the economic development plan that had been, has been approved by the citizens of Blair now multiple times, most recently about a year and a half ago, was reauthorized for another 20 years. So, when applications are received, and again, Mike, as the executive director for Gateway Development Corporation, is contracted with the city of Blair to oversee all of this activity. So when applications come in, Mike pulls all that data together, gets it to the advisory committee. We have two bankers that are on there that are obviously well-skilled, and they will look at financial information, and so they do all that analysis on the applications that come in. Those committees then meet once a month if we do have applications ready to go, otherwise they need at least quarterly to kind of review the past projects, are they keeping up with the employment requirements, that may be part of that, to evaluate any new projects that are coming along. Those meetings are public meetings, I think they're on the third Mondays of the month, something like that, and they're held here in this room. So again, public's invited to be able to see that, it's all public record as far as these funds are concerned. But when these applications then come, the advisory committee makes a recommendation. That recommendation then goes to the finance committee, so the finance committee met earlier tonight, kind of talked through each of these. Mike now here is to present all of it to you, and then again, the recommendation will come from the finance committee. Finance committee's not obligated to go with the exact same number. Finance committee's not obligated to go with the exact same number. That comes from the advisory committee. They can raise that, they can lower it, they can go with the same. So that varies just depending upon the project. But ultimately, our economic development fund is there to support new and existing businesses that are in town. They're not just large industrial businesses, but all kinds of businesses. And you'll see there's a good variety of ones and other important services that are offered to the city. And that's sort of the first one coming up here. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you, and then there'll be a second application again for the next agenda as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening mayor and council. For the first one we have tonight, we have Little Blossoms Kids Club. As you all know, in the, as you all know in the last month, the school foundation decided to close down their before and after school kids club. With that being said, Cassie actually stepped up to the plate and said, you know, we need to do something about this. And she came to me, started talking a little bit, and she put in an LV840 application to help support the before and after school kids club at the former Little Blossoms Deerfield location. She was actually looking for a hundred and ten thousand dollars for this project. Part of that was for playground equipment, part of that was for transportation of us, and then just supplies. The overall project, after we talked through LV840 for, I don't know, forty-five minutes? The motion was to allocate one hundred and ten thousand dollars and sixty thousand of that, sixty thousand of that would be allocated against the bus or for the bus so they would have transportation to and from, as long as she has her, met her number of employees. She said she was going to have eight new employees for this project and then three existing employees. The second fifty thousand would be forgivable loan at zero percent as long as they had seventy kids or more every year, and she maintains that number. That would go on for seven years, so every year it would be just knocked down from there. So that was the overall motion, but I would rather have Cassie come up and talk a little bit about this so you get a little more flavor of what this project's all about. So with that, Cassie?
My name is Cassie Reisz, R-E-I-S-Z, and I'm at 280 Review Drive. I was pretty surprised at this project this summer. That was not something I was anticipating would be on my plate. It is a high need for our community and very passionate about child welfare. It's my calling, and so I made sure to fill the need. I was able to get licensed, get the building back operating as vacant for about nineteen, nineteen months. And that does a lot to a building. It doesn't seem like it would, but it does. I've got the building back to code and I got my license on Friday, and yesterday was our first day in operation. So we were able to do it, it was, it took another month, but we're going to make do. One of the big things is, we're making do with things that I already had. Tables, we're using cafeteria tables. It's making do for the cause and we're filling the need, but I want to make it something for the kids. I want to make it something they want to be at every day. Another big part of that was stipulation with the bus. I think that's really important. Our bus, by golly, it does its job, but there are some cold days where it does not want to do its job. So we used cardboard and breaked it a little, a couple of times to block the wind on some of those really frigid days last year. But having a bus for as many kids, especially with having a program that's up to double in size, just ensuring that we are able to provide reliable, safe transportation is a natural for these kids. So it would be very helpful to our program to be able to utilize the bus.
Do you have any questions for me?
What's the age group you're looking to serve to bring in? I mean, from what to what?
Yes, so I currently run Little Blossoms at the Washington Street location, and that is six, up to twelve. And we did have our school age program in there. With this expansion, we would not have fit all of our children from the Blair Kids Academy and my program. We're very similar size, we're almost equal in daily operation, but I was not going to be able to fit those kiddos into care. So we are operating at the Deerfield location across from the Deerfield School as a school age only program. You have to be enrolled in kindergarten, so they have to start their first day of kindergarten, they can be with us, and then up to twelve years of age. Another helpful part about going up to twelve years of age, that also provides transportation to friends at Otte Middle School who may have to cross highways and cross town when there's not in-town transportation. So I do have quite a few Otte, Otte children that will be attending.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would say that just for economic development purposes in general, we have bigger RFPs coming. They ask about childcare, and if there is not a before and after school program, that's, that's a game changer. I mean, that's like just off the list. So this is something very important for the community that we really have to look at. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Having none? The finance committee, do you need one?
We did. We considered the allocation of funds for it. We know that there's a need for this program in the community, so I don't believe we had objections about the program. I'd like to introduce resolution number 2025-73.
Resolution number 2025-73 was introduced by council member Banner approving LV840 application from Little Blossoms Kids Club, 202232 Washington Street to reopen their facility at 1221 Deerfield Boulevard to operate a grade as school age before and after school program, Kids Academy.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-73 as presented.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2025-73. Please register your vote.
All council members present voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution 2025-74 approving LV840 application from Corman Bar and Grill to renovate and update the venue and kitchen at 1631 Washington Street to operate Black Label Blair's Bar and Grill.
Good evening mayor and council again. Mike Brooks, Gateway Development. So this is our second application of the night, and this is a very exciting one as well. So we have Corman Bar and Grill, or I'm guessing it would be called, Black Label Blair. We have a restaurant coming into the old Fire Bar. Red Brick, sorry, I always do that there, I don't know why. The old Red Brick. And they are, they are looking for seventy thousand dollars, and they're looking for renovations. The building has a couple of issues per se that needs to be up to standard so they can do things. They are going to be having at least eight-time FTEs at this place. And I would rather have them come up and talk about their business because they do a wonderful job in Fremont right now and I'd like you to learn more about it from them. So with that, Paul Jason.
While we're waiting for them to come up, I have to point out that it was the blue ribbon. Again, it was Red Brick, and now it's gonna be Black Label. Just say, I don't know if you guys noticed that, but me, but.
I wish this was like Shark Tank and we had samples.
Paul Jason Corman, K-O-R-M-A-N, and we live at 1011 Blue and I didn't find, no. Just on the west side of Washington Street. A little bit about our business, we opened three years ago in Fremont. We do gourmet burgers and fancy shakes, if you will. Awesome shakes. Those are probably the biggest draw to our restaurant, I appreciate it. We actually were looking at coming to Blair before we went to Fremont. We actually looked at purchasing the building right next to the Red Brick. And then our banker said, well, why don't we lease this building instead, so we decided to do that.
Now we got all the kinks out, and now they're coming back to Blair.
And we've noticed that Blair is very similar to Fremont, and there's not a lot of mom and pop restaurants. Fast food chains. We do try ourself in the quality food that we put out. We do hire a lot of, we hire a lot of different kind of employees. We hire a lot of high school students who do our shakes. Our shake, call our shake girls, they're mostly girls, and they love decorating and all that stuff, so.
Baristas advisory.
Exactly.
Other than that, we do have, there are, Mike said there are quite a few issues with the building. It has some rough issues, the whole front facade needs to be renovated. Electrical system needs to be upgraded and things like that, so. Lay check needs to be upgraded as well. So those are the, the main things that we are looking for with this. Any questions?
What hours are you looking to operate when you get opening in Blair?
We're looking at opening, it'll be eleven till nine.
Weekdays.
Weekdays. Eleven till.
Ten probably, weeknights, or weekends.
Weekends.
With the exception of, our kids are all out of high school now, but we're, we're sports parents. So we plan on after football games, after basketball, anytime there's a home game, we want to stay open late enough that we can have the team back, we can have the parents, fans back. We also been talking about some things that we want to do where there's, if you come in in your bear gear, you're gonna discount on, on game nights, things like that.
And we will probably, we were talking about it, but we will probably close Sunday. We'll be open two, that's your second. We'll have to dig renovations, you gotta take. We're hoping to be open back over.
Oh.
We'll close tomorrow on the bill.
And we also, Jason's worked his whole, this was my crazy idea of restaurants. He's worked his whole career in construction, so we have Corman Construction, which has kind of taken a backseat for the last three years while we were in Fremont. So he and my son will be managing the project. I don't know if they'll be doing all the work, but we've had our contractors over there already. We've got everything all lined up, and we're ready to start next week for construction to start.
Is the old blue ribbon sign from the facade in the basement, did they store that?
I have not seen the blue ribbon sign.
There's a lot down there.
Yeah, I've been in the basement, I used to sweep the floors on the weekends and stuff. My grandparents' old blue ribbon.
If I find the blue ribbon sign, I'll go ahead.
Do that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
This is another quality of life thing that the city of Blair definitely needs. We need more restaurants, more diversification, this fits the bill. I'm pretty excited about this. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Any comments from the public?
Good evening mayor and council, I'm Ed Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-W-S, 739 Or 16th Street. My concern about this is, we do need the restaurants, but downtown is type one construction, which is non-combustibles. Are they, when they do their remodel, are they considering the hoods to meet the standards that were in place? The other part would be, how many people are going to be drawn to this new location? Fifty, a hundred? We're gonna need parking, so that's another issue that we're gonna have, is the parking downtown. What's, what's our solution for that? So that's something that's coming up that we need to consider because as we add all these businesses, we've got to have someplace for them to go. If they, if there's no parking, nobody's gonna come. They're not gonna walk ten blocks to get someplace. So that's something that we have to consider as we go forward. I think it's a great idea, I just wanted to build according to the standards for that central business district zone. So the plans, even if it's a remodel, it still works, so approve contractors, work that's been looked at so that we know that it meets all the standards to keep the people safe. Thank you. Did you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Hi. Jason is a contractor, he's meeting, he'll read all the codes. As far as parking goes, Phil and I, actually Rod and I have walked downtown at night. And there, we can count over a hundred and fifty parking spots that are typically open within, within two hundred meters, I would say, or two blocks of that, of the whole downtown. So yes, it might cause a little, someone might have to walk a half block, but we do have the parking downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Finance committee?
Just an opinion on this. I think it's a great idea. We need more things downtown, we're trying to bring downtown back. With this, I'll introduce our resolution 2025-74.
Resolution number 2025-74 was introduced by council member Wolf approving LV840 application for Corman Bar and Grill to renovate and update the venue and kitchen at 1631 Washington Street to operate Black Label Blair Bar and Grill.
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-74 as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2025-74. They're hungry.
Two ribbon burgers.
Maybe they'll open after meetings.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes. Before we go on to item number ten, do we need to have a short recess? Okay, I will give you seven minutes. Well, you might not be the only one. Do you need to speak? Wants you to stop. Would you need to speak? Wants you to stop? Thank you for letting us take a short break. Uh, before we start with, um, item number ten, I just wanted to make a public statement that, uh, there seems to be misconception in the public that my yes vote at the last council meeting was in favor of the annexation. When my yes vote was actually to keep the conversation continuing. That was just first reading. I want the conversation to continue because honestly, um, why would the council, why should the council ignore the research, the findings, and the suggestions of the Housing Advisory Committee? They put to a lot of effort, a lot of hours of time and meetings to put together a package of suggestions for the council. And having our conversations up here is important. Merits, I mean, their efforts should be merited by our conversation. And that's why I voted yes. All right. So, having said that, I will open up item number ten to consider ordinance Twenty Five Eighty-Five on second reading for the Twenty Twenty-Five Southwestern Annexation Plan. In order to discuss it, we will have to have someone introduce it.
Honors, ordinance Twenty Five Eighty-Five on second reading.
An ordinance by the City of Blair, Nebraska, annexing and extending the corporate limits of the City of Blair to include the real estate, which is generally described as a Twenty Twenty-Five Southwestern Annexation Area, peeling off ordinance hearts of ordinance conflict airway, providing when it starts to be full force in effect and published in pamphlet form.
Now, okay. Uh, I move to amend ordinance Twenty Five Eighty-Five to remove version one of the annexation plan and map and replace it with version two of the annexation plan and map.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is going to be the beginning of some public comments, and so I'll begin, and then we'll allow everyone to get up and talk a little bit about it. Um, you know, we've decided to have multiple different large events that people would want to come to. Uh, I know most are still here for CJ's right-of-way permits that are coming up. But, but maybe a few people might be interested in this annexation. Um, Aaron, why don't you go ahead and bring up, uh, version one of the map, if you will. So, again, this was the original map that was presented. Again, this goes all the way back, if you keep in mind, to the Housing Advisory Committee, uh, and their strong recommendation that the council did about, that we'd be, uh, more proactive when it comes to annexations. And so, knowing that there's, uh, activity that is potential along Twenty Fifth Street Corridor, knowing that several of, of the individual parcels that are listed in here already are developed from the standpoint that many of them are residential lots, even though they're large acreages, uh, large lots, uh, they're intended to remain what they are. They're not necessarily primed for development. That's the reason why ultimately we presented the package that we did to you. So, again, starting on the western side of town, going along basically that Twenty Fifth Street Corridor, um, ending down here where Southern Hills and Southern Ridge are, uh, and then extending across the highway to both a, uh, some commercial businesses that are located along Highway Thirty, uh, down here, and then picking up all of the, uh, you know, several of the, uh, housing units, uh, that are located along P twenty-six, wrapping up one thirty-three to County Road twenty-six, and then a few just north of there, kind of filling in that block of the area. That was version one. Aaron, bring up version two, if you would. And again, um, obviously, council members have made the motion, the second for this. So, you'll be voting on this amendment in just a minute, just so the audience knows, if the council does approve this amendment, then ultimately, after the discussion that they want to go through, uh, they would potentially vote then on the second reading only, uh, regarding this amended version. So, what we're showing, uh, to you, and again, it was the, primarily the two, uh, council members from Ward Two, and this part of town would become part of Ward Two, if it was annexed into the city, uh, that their recommendation was to pull out all of this orange shaded area that's located there. So, again, the individual primary residences that are along P twenty-six, that go all the way up to County Road twenty-six, and a few that are just immediately north of there. Staying in it would be the, the more commercial developments, uh, that are located along Highway Thirty. Uh, that would include, uh, the, the new development that was just approved here. And again, there's some continuing, uh, deplining permits that are, uh, on the agenda for the next council meeting. They're going to be considered. But all that area would remain in, as well as all the other properties of, of the western side of town. Uh, there's posted out, uh, in spark, a version two of the actual annexation plan. And so, very briefly, let me just note a couple of the, the significant numbers, uh, that are changing from the current plan to the new plan. The number of parcels that are affected, uh, drops from forty-two, just down to twenty. Um, the, uh, number of people impacted, uh, goes from what we estimated to be approximately ninety, and that was just a wrong number. We didn't count families and how many people were living in each of the houses. Uh, but we estimated, I think, two and a half people, uh, per, per residential structure. So, our estimate went from ninety to thirty-nine. Uh, and the amount of acreage that would be included in this annexation package goes from five hundred and fifty-seven acres to three hundred and eighty point two five acres. The, uh, number of lane miles in all of this affects, obviously, the, the impact on the city for both, uh, you know, responsibilities going forward and costs going forward. Uh, the, uh, this new, uh, version two package, uh, includes new lane miles of four point eight miles as compared to nine point five of four. So, dropping from nine point five to four point eight, uh, that would be now just an increase of three point two percent compared to the, uh, amount of road miles that we have right now. Uh, as we kind of explained a little bit in the plan, um, because of different fire districts, uh, and, uh, the rural areas that these are in, there were previously four different levy rates that were represented. Uh, one of those is removed exclusively, uh, by this, uh, and by not, uh, having those properties noted, included. And so, that drops down to just three different rural districts. Um, and the total value represented, or valuation represented, uh, in the annexation package drops from just a little bit under seventeen point five million down to eight point five million. So, from seventeen five to eighteen five, the anticipated revenue, uh, from taxes to the city would drop from a little over fifty thousand dollars to an estimated twenty-four thousand four sixty-six. So, again, roughly kind of half, uh, the revenue, half the valuation, uh, that would be expected, uh, in this particular area. Again, primarily because of the number of residential areas that are located down here in this area that's being excluded. So, again, that's represents version two for your consideration. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Rich Zelensky from, uh, eighty-six, ninety-seven Victory Lane.
Just spell your asking, please.
Was Z E L, yeah, N S K Y, quick. Uh, thank you, Mary, or, uh, Mayor, Mayor and City Council Members. Um, I, uh, when we first came on with this, uh, you know, door to door, and got to meet a lot of my neighbors, and, uh, kind of was a spokesman for twenty-six and the, my neighbors in this area. So, um, my, my first question is, is so now that you're going to vote on this, uh, addendum or amendment?
Amendment.
Amendment. Okay, so, a vote yes today would take that part out, and then that's done? Or does it have to go to a third reading, or how's that work?
It will still go to a third reading, but it would not include the hashed parcels.
Yeah. So, there'll actually be two votes today. One is, do they want to do this amendment or not? If they do, then they have to pass the whole thing as amended on the second reading. And then that amended version will come up again two weeks from now, because the state law requires three separate readings.
So, to take it out would be a yes and a yes. Does that...
But, well, I mean, one yes tonight takes it out. Then that's the plan they're moving forward with. That they could say yes or no to tonight. And if they say yes tonight, they'll, they'll need to say yes before it gets approved down the road. But that plan, unless they change it then, which they can change anything at any time.
Okay.
But if they don't change it then, that would be removed and stay removed.
Okay. Just so I know. Um, so...
It's clear as night.
Yeah. I've, I've talked to a lot of other city council members and mayor, emails and phone conversation. I appreciate, uh, for the, uh, be a yes vote for taking this out then. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. I Denise Chata, C A D A, two zero three five, Montreux Circle, from Blair. I just have a question about why, if you're not annexing the residential areas, why do you still annex the business part south of the town? What's the, if you're going to act, not act, annex anything south, it should be the whole part that's left out, in my opinion. Is there a reason why the business part is still considering the annexation? Thank you.
What we hear? I, and correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the discussion about the other part, where the reason to consider leaving that out is because of the nature of those resident, they're more rural than the rest of the sections, and to pres, help them preserve their style of life there, as opposed to the commercial area. That was, I believe, why we decided to...
Well, and, and I guess from a staff perspective, you know, you, you consider annexations because there, there are properties that are being developed that, that really should be part of your community. Um, in fact, for businesses that would be located here, if other people look at those businesses and say, and as an example, you know, John Hinton's going to be bringing forward many storage units or a storage unit out there. We have many other storage units that are located in town. Well, this, if you didn't annex this property, this business actually has an economic advantage compared to the other ones that are already in your town, because they have to pay property tax, uh, to, at the city level. And these people wouldn't if you didn't annex them. So, in many ways, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, just cause, if you will, that when development takes place, that you can go ahead and annex. You know, the, the others that were more residential, again, my argument was, we included them in the first place because they've been developed. Uh, that made, that made sense, but it's not essential. Uh, you've got the right to be able to say, well, maybe now isn't quite the time. Obviously, you could say now's not the time for any of these particular properties. But from a staff perspective, it makes sense that you would annex them out because they're being developed or are developed, uh, in, you know, are part of the community.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Chris Dino, one two eight six one twenty room twenty six. So, I just have a question. Can you hear me?
Just speak out loud, yeah.
All right. Um, so, I just have a question on, a general question on annexations and, um, providing extending the, um, uh, uh, city services like, uh, sanitary sewers. So, I think Mr. Green said that there's not, um, uh, going to be any development right now, that a lot of those large residential acres on the, um, western side there are going to stay that way. Um, but the, uh, cost impact and, and all the financing is all tied to actual development happening. So, is there any kind of time, if development doesn't happen, is there a timetable, um, or any kind of, uh, estimate financing of how, uh, sanitary sewer and other city services are going to be going to that western side that's, um, staying in this version two? Um, so, is there a timetable? Is there a way of financing if development isn't happening? Um, that's my only question. Just want some clarification on how that all works. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Tom Muff, M U F F, twenty-five thirty Hollow Road. Um, my concern again is, is we keep hearing about this Twenty Fifth Street, about the, uh, culvert that has to be replaced, all that. I heard, you know, at the last reading, they said you guys were getting a study for what it would cost. That no maintenance road, and I'll gladly take any of you for a ride on there. You aren't going to drive it with anything but my Ranger. I'll take any of you on it. That is not a simple gravel it, and it's a gravel road. I'd also like to see what you're going to propose for this Twenty Fifth Street, how you're going to go around Huber's Place there, or you can come right through the middle of it. How do you think you're going to build that road? I would love to see these proposals, but I don't know where to go find it. So, when you get those estimates from whoever you're getting them from, I'm still totally against all, all that stuff along Hollow Road. Oh, those are all big acreages, you know? To, I have twelve acres. I've got another twelve next to me that I'm looking at getting. It's farmland. It's pastures. There's cattle on that. I don't understand how you think that's going to help. I'm all for more housing. I got it. We need it. We've talked about this last time. You got the huge apartment complex going out, uh, at the Roundabout. In fact, I just read that they're going to have a dog park also, um, in the paper from Omaha. Um, you got, I don't know what's going on with Fernando's. I've heard a few different things. You've got the proposal out by the, the, um, city addition out by the cemetery there. That same gentleman was trying to build. I don't know where that's at. But that would give you plenty of housing, plenty of, uh, of things to move forward for. You got plenty of projects going. I just think we're jumping into this a little too fast for figuring out exactly how all that'll work. That's all I got. Thank you.
Your answer. I'll accept that. Any other comments from the public? Council?
I'm going to take a moment real quick. Um, you know, I appreciate the fact that council members, you know, revisited this and, and changed some things. I mean, I think it's nice that if you did that, looked into this. I applaud you for that. Um, I'm for, you know, taking the section out, but I'm not necessarily for the annexation. Um, and I'll, I'll vote yes on this, take the section out. But, um, it seems, you know, I'm all for growth. Okay? We need growth to help sustain our city. I get that, too. Uh, but I think it should be done in a timely manner. We just annexed two hundred and seventy acres last year by Hollow Road, and we need, I think we need to work on developing that area, um, other than what the gentleman said earlier about the other two places. And I, I know there's some residential areas in Blair that we need to probably look at, building homes for that. I just don't think right now, it, it could pass, but it's just my opinion. I mean, it could take, we'd do it next year, two years, five years from now. It, everyone's are going to get annexed. It's just hard to sit and go. I just don't think right now is the right time with all the projects we have going on in this city, with all the things that we're working on. We have a lot of asks coming up in the budget. There's just a lot of things. So, that's just my opinion and what I think of it. So, I'm going to vote yes to remove the section. Uh, but I'm not necessarily going to support the annexation when it comes up.
Aaron's going to bring that, uh, Plan Two Matt back up, just to answer a couple of questions that were raised. So, the one question was about, uh, potentially sewer service for that western area. Um, one of the things that we have started doing is some longer-term planning and, and studies to see how we would serve many of these areas. Most of these areas, um, we don't have gravity-feed sewers in place right now. So, that's part of what we will be looking at doing is, the, the expectation over the years has always been that probably down here along where the railroad line is, is where a trunk sewer would be. When Southern Ridge, many years ago, there's a lift station that's located over here. That was always intended to be a temporary lift station until a sewer line had been extended all the way down that could tie into, and then everything in this whole area would gravity-feed back into the city. So, that plan would probably start, uh, being developed next year. Doesn't mean that it's going to be, you know, installed anytime soon, because, yes, development does play a key role in that. Uh, one of the things that, that same Housing Advisory Committee, uh, recommended is that the council consider, uh, how are you going to fund some of these, um, main lines that have to be installed in certain key places? Because without those main lines, there's no, there's no sewer to be able to be developed, you know, or to be tied into anyway. Uh, so, now's the time to start doing the planning for that. Uh, and it seems like, again, parcels that are already developed, are on the edge of town, are ready for annexation, wired Why are they not included in the city, and then we'll move forward some of those plans. The other question was about Hollow Road and the Box Culvert. You know, I, I hope last weekend, if it taught you anything, it taught you how close we are to a major disaster. We, we had, you know, seven to eight inches of rain. If that had been ten to twelve inches of rain, we might not have a Box Culvert anymore over No Name Creek. And everybody on Hollow Road and who's connected to Hollow Road would literally be stuck with no way to get out right now. That is the only avenue that they have. Could we reconstruct that and spend more money by diverting traffic on both sides of that? Yes. Transportation Committee told us, let's find out what it would cost to improve the Twenty-Fifth Street corridor down through County Road thirty-one to connect down to Highway thirty. And yes, it's going to be more expensive than building the Box Culvert in two pieces, but if it's fifty percent of the cost that you would have wasted building that Box Culvert can be used to open up that corridor, that then allows future development and allows a second alternative ingress and egress for all of these residents, that's something I think that you should consider. And so that's one of the reasons why we're looking at doing that, and, and why we've talked a lot about this Twenty-Fifth Street corridor. There is no plan whatsoever, and it can't happen anymore, that North Twenty-Fifth Street would be connected with Southern Twenty-Fifth Street, south of Hollow Road. Number one, north of Hollow Road is a private, is private land already, there's structures in the way. So it's never going to connect to Twenty-Fifth Street, it's not going to connect to Skyline Drive or anything like that. Those decisions have all been made in the past, and so there's no, not gonna be any direct north-south conveyance through there. But from Hollow Road, south on Twenty-Fifth Street, and especially this unimproved area, that's the part that we're looking at right now. Just last week, I think it was last week, maybe week and a half ago, we had a meeting with the engineers, they're at ninety percent done on the drawings now. And so we met, we met with the County Road Superintendent, some representatives in the county board, just to bring them up to speed on what the, what the plan looks like. We already set a meeting coming up for the Transportation Committee, so we'll brief them more fully. And then ultimately, it'll be up to them to decide whether they're prepared now to bring that plan back to the council, and then consider whether we wanna go out and bid for that. The way the engineers are putting the package together, their strong recommendation to us is look for one general contractor that would ultimately do both projects. Would, would do the, the enhancement of the Twenty-Fifth Street, County Road thirty-one corridor to open that all up. And then they would also be the same contractor that would rebuild the Box Culvert. And the plan, then scheduling-wise, would be to do, obviously, the street improvements, excuse me, first, so that you have that alternate ingress and egress for the neighborhood and for people who live on Hollow Road. And then once that's done, you're able to go ahead and shut that culvert down, that Box Culvert down, and rebuild it all in one step, and hopefully get those cost savings. Hopefully, there would be some advantage too of a larger project, if you, you know, a general contractor can do both of those. They could probably begin doing some of the preparatory work on the Box Culvert, even while the road is going on. So all of this is simply about, you know, trying to maintain the infrastructure that we do have, planning for the future, being prepared, you know, with various alternatives. And again, you're always gonna hear from staff, things that are ready to be annexed and could be annexed, we're gonna recommend, should be annexed. But whether they are is your choice. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment?
Sure, come on.
Tom Muff, M U F F twenty five thirty Hollow Road. So I appreciate what Phil said. If that Box Culvert washed out of there, believe me, we'd get out. The Hubers are very generous, and you can go right through their property to Skyline Drive, I've done it many times. I don't know if you've been on Hollow Road, Phil, since this storm, it's terrible. The water was running down there, it was blocked with trees, we couldn't get out in the morning. Who moves that? Us, me, neighbors, chainsaws, skid steers, fix the roads so we can drive up and down it. You guys haven't even been on there, haven't seen the city out there yet, it's terrible. It's terrible. Yep, you should see it, and there's trees down everywhere, we take care of that, we do that. That's all.
Tom, I'm gonna argue with you a little bit. I've been on the Transportation Committee for twenty-four years. Hollow Road has been a pain in the arse forever. Nobody wants to do anything out there, not the homeowners or anything else. We're not, we don't even know where the center of the road is, because it's not centered even on the property, on the lines. We have to get this road taken care of. On Saturday morning, I could show you pictures on my phone, on Highway thirty with that prick, the people on those apartments or those condos down there, four foot from their front yard. We have to get that done, and this is why this annexation has to get done.
Well, Frank, I, I...
And I've been on that beer can, my kids, they've been stuck out there. I've been out there a month ago. That road's terrible, the county doesn't wanna do it, a damn thing.
Right.
So I'm gonna push to get that done, that road done for development and for the people that live on Hollow Road. So I'm gonna, that's enough.
And I agree with you, Phil, or Frank, I'm sorry, I agree with you that that road, but that's already in the city limits. Annexation isn't gonna do anything with that.
We're still trying to take care of it with the property owners or the ones that are the problem.
Okay.
Believe me, I've been on it forever, and it's been a pain in the mind.
That's the city already, all the way up to Twenty-Fifth Street.
Well, we've had a lot of development out there too, and that's where all that extra water's coming from. That's not for me.
Any other discussion, council? Any other comments from the public?
Short one. Rich Zelenesky, Z E L E N S K Y from eighty-six, ninety-seven Victor Lane. Just, I'm kind of a visual guy, some people are, whatever. Can I just have everybody that's in that shaded area stand up, just so you get an idea of the people that wanna be vote yes, I guess, and having us removed, so. There you go. Thank you.
Any other discussion, council? Having done, we've had a motion and a second to amend ordinance number twenty-five eighty-five to remove version one of the annexation plan and map, and replace it with version two. Please register your vote.
All members present voted aye. It won't pop up until we do the next vote.
Okay, of course. Thank you. Motion passes. Would you have to proceed?
Where's the vote?
It, it passed, it doesn't show it until the whole final vote is, and the next, after the next one, then it'll show votes.
So motion passes.
I'll go ahead. I'm moved for passage of ordinance twenty-five eighty-five on second reading as amended. Second.
Question.
The question for the council is, shall ordinance number twenty-five eighty-five be passed on second reading as amended? Please register your vote.
All council members present voted aye.
I declare ordinance twenty-five eighty-five passed on second reading as amended.
And so if you wanna see, you can see, the very first vote is up above, everyone voted, everyone voted yes for the amendment, and then everyone voted yes for the second reading. So again, that'll go on to the council meeting two weeks from tonight, again, for the third reading potentially.
So the amended part is, the shaded part is out?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
So why wasn't there an opportunity, after you said it was changed, to take that piece out? There was a second reading, there should be another chance to speak about whether we want to approve it or not from the public. You guys just went right straight to the second vote.
That's what our whole public conversation was just about.
And there will be at the third and final reading as well, I believe.
That's what Phil got up and explained and showed.
Okay.
I might, I might encourage you too, I know for those of you who are excited that, that maybe you were pulled out, and that's great. This next item is important for you as well, because it does deal with potential changes in the municipal code that would affect areas that might be annexed in the future.
So don't go anywhere. Item number eleven, consider ordinance twenty-five eighty-seven amending the Blair Municipal Code, Chapter Six, Article Two, Section six dash two zero two, livestock banned from municipality, and Section six dash two zero two point zero one, fowl controlled within municipality. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor. So zoning and municipal code rules are very, very complicated, very confusing to a lot of people. There, there are municipal code rules, and then there are zoning and subdivision regulations and rules. And both of them sometimes affects properties and what can be done with properties. The way I like to describe it is, the municipal code is kind of the, the, the big bear, and what it says rules everywhere throughout the whole city. Then the zoning regulations, depending upon what actual zone you happen to live in, and what the regulations are for your property. So what you have before you tonight is an ordinance that affects the municipal code. And right now, as it exists, the municipal code has very stringent restrictions on livestock, large animals, and fowl, anything but chickens, that could be located in the city limits. That, as you heard over the last several weeks, is a great concern for those who have been enjoying the ability to have either livestock or fowl on their properties, and were being looked at either now or in the future for being annexed. And so we're sensitive to that, you know? We're looking at these annexations as things that would be positive for the city, but no one calls us and regularly complains about, you know, the cattle that graze on open fields that are down along one thirty-three. No one complains previously, no one's gonna complain if they're in the city limits or not, because, you know, that's really, I would think, an impediment to things. But the, the rules, the code necessarily wouldn't allow that. And so these are potential changes to the municipal code. We're still working on other changes as well. Some of those would be what to do with the potential for being able to open burn at any time throughout the year versus only being able to burn during the two fall and spring cleanup times. I think we can address those, we've already addressed them for TA properties in some ways, we may need to continue to tweak that language. You will notice in what we're gonna look at tonight, there's some reference to a zoning district that adhered, is called residential estates. What we have before the Planning Commission right now is a request to amend our zoning regulations, yeah, this is municipal code, but with the Planning Commission right now, amend the zoning regulations to rebrand, is the phrase I'm using, to rebrand the zoning district right now that's called rural residential estates, and to rebrand it as just residential estates, because it's still large estates, large lots, that are used primarily for residential purposes. In the past, we've always referred to them as rural residential estates, because they've always been outside the city limits. Even though the zoning book itself doesn't say, these have to exist outside the city limits, we've just treated it that way. Well, maybe it makes sense to now make it clear that these can be either in the city limits or outside the city limits. The word rural just kind of confuses everybody. The point is, they're residential in nature, and they're estates, they're large lots. And therefore, with a large lot, there's certain uses that you can have. But Planning Commission tabled that until the next, or postponed it until the next meeting. So it won't be before you this month, it might come before you the next month, once they make that recommendation. But you will notice in here some new language that references residential estates, and that's what it's referring to. And so it's in two sections, and Aaron, if you wanna bring up the red line version, so that others can kind of follow along. And zoom in a little bit, so we can read it. So two main sections, the Section six dash two zero two is the one that deals with livestock being banned from the municipality. And normally, you can't have livestock in the municipality at all, unless they're there for some kind of demonstration purposes. And that's what the, the second half of this deals with, is the, the exceptions. But what we have added is the red language here, and so whenever you see these red markings, if it's red and underscored, then that's new wording that's being added to it. If you happen to see red that's crossed out, that's current language that's being taken out of the, the potential change. So most of this is being added. And six dash two zero two deals with livestock, and again, it still basically says they're gonna be banned, except on land designated as zoning district transitional agricultural or residential estates, in which case the zoning regulations for transitional agricultural or residential estates regulate what livestock are allowed. Again, there's transitional ag out there that allows one animal head per acre, so the grazing of cattle, but not a cattle feed lot. But you can raise cattle, you can have horses, you can have other kinds of livestock, llamas, and any kind of thing that you want. All of them are regulated by animals per head, depending on what breed it is and how big they are, and how much space they, they need. All of that is still allowed in transitional ag. Then you have, again, these residential estates, what we would call rural residential estates today. We even showed at the Planning Commission that with the suggested change we're making to rural residential estates, becoming residential estates, all it is is in the titles. And there's multiple sections throughout that chapter of regulations that describes itself, rural residential estates, and we're dropping the word rural, just residential estates. Zero changes whatsoever to what's allowed, zero changes to what people can do today. And this was approved by you, in the future, in the, we do rebrand then rural residential estates as residential estates. In the future, if you can do something today when you're outside the city limits, you can continue to do it if you ever get annexed sometime. And so we're trying to let people know at least that we, we hear them, we hear their concerns. We don't see that there's gonna be any problem in having a good community with those, with those areas and those uses still allowed. So that's in the livestock area. Six dash two oh two point one then is the section that deals with fowl, you know, just all kinds of other birds. Again, there's a whole long section in six, in, in Section six here, that then deals with chicken permits. And those are chicken permits in the typical part of Blair right now, where you have fairly dense neighborhoods, and under the right circumstances and with your neighbor's concurrence, you can have chickens in the city of Blair. This deals, though, with what's allowed already right now. And the language is almost identical to what we saw up above, that normally chickens, ducks, geese, turkeys, pheasants, quail, ostrich, and other fowl are not allowed inside the city limits, normally. And we took out the words, just such fowl, it was kind of, you know, confusing. Except, again, on land designated as zoning districts transitional ag or residential estates, in which case then the zoning regulations for what's allowed for transitional ag or residential estates regulate what fowl are allowed. Otherwise, you can also still continue to add them for exhibit purposes and things like that. So we're, again, we're basically taking both sections and saying, instead of the municipal code just simply blanket saying you can't do this, we're gonna rely on now the zoning regulations for those two zoning districts, and whatever the zoning allows you to do, you can continue to do whether in the city limits or not. Any questions?
Any comments from the public?
Laura Jackson, J A C K S, the line addresses one four six zero zero, County Road P sixteen, Blair. Thank you for your time and all of your input on this, and the revisions that have been made. As I was listening and heard a little bit about the planning meeting recently, the thing that did catch my attention is changing from rural residential estate terminology to residential estate terminology. I did a little research on that, because it just didn't, you know, if there's no changes, if it doesn't affect anything, if we're just rebranding, then let's just leave it. You know, that, that seems to make sense to me. So I did a little digging in Nebraska, is there a difference? And there really appears to be. And I won't read it to you, you're very, very able to do that, and I know you take this very seriously. But when I read the definition of rural residential estates, and I read the definition of residential estates, there's one that jumps out describing Blair, and there's one that doesn't seem to quite fit as a broad paintbrush across everything. And so I think I would just ask that, that that be considered. You know, I, I understand sometimes we like to rebrand and reword things, but there are differences in Nebraska as a state, and also federally, between rural residential estates and the things you're allowed to do on your property and residential estates. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Sorry, Mitch, ladies first. Hi, Chris Dino, Bart, I'm one two eight six one, County Road twenty-six. I just had a question specifically about annexation of these properties and animals like dogs and cats. So sometimes people have a lot, I know that the city has a four dog and cat limit, and so when people do get annexed, how many barn cats are they allowed to have, like barn cats have a use, they take care of birds and some ice things, all sorts of things. And so it's great to have a lot of them around, sometimes you have a lot, sometimes you don't. And, and I don't want to be limited to a total of four dogs and cats, 'cause that is taking you on these bunch of properties. And then also, I did have questions about the fowl when people are on these large residential... And then also, um, I did have questions about the fowl when people are on these large residential, um, uh, properties. Uh, are neighbors allowed, do, do they all need to get a notification if somebody wants to keep, uh, chickens? Are these larger estates not allowed to have a rooster? That seems like, you know, if you have a four H kid, they want to show a rooster or hog, um, if they can't, if they're on an R R E. Uh, I'm not sure what the rules would be, um, thank you, I just want some, uh, yeah, if you have a question to those questions.
Any other comments from the public? Yes.
Rich Zelensky, Z L M N S K Y from eighty-six, ninety-seven Victory Nine. Yeah, I just wanted to go real fast, uh, if, if, if we're not going to change anything as far as the regulations in the zoning, why don't we just leave it alone the way it is? Thanks.
Matt Heller, H E L L D R, 10583, County Road 29. Like we talked about earlier, it just isn't a slippery slope to me. You start changing names, that's simple enough. Next time it's something else they change, it could be tax levies, it could be what's allowed to have on land. I mean, why, we live here for a reason. My kids highly involved in four H, we have sheep, we have goats, we have chickens. People want to come out here and do that kind of stuff. We want to grow that population, I guess, but I think it's for them, they don't want to be a part of that, they don't want to be a part of that. But you can't take away, and I know we're saying nothing's changing right now, but you change one thing and you change one thing, if one thing they see you know, we're, we're not a rural community anymore, we're, we're, uh, Elkhorn, we're Bennington. And, uh, that's what makes us who we are and it makes our, our kids do, get outside, do things, have responsibilities. Don't take it away from us, so, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Heller and some of you others, I, I just hope that you understand that I believe part of the reason we came up with this idea and Phil did is that to protect your guys, so eventually, say someone does sell their property and they subdivide it. People live there, they can't go and complain like, hey, these guys next to me have cows and sheep going on over there. Like, yeah, because they're allotted to do that. So in a sense, I think we're trying to take into consideration the style of life that you want to continue to enjoy there and to allow you to continue to do that. So, uh, but I do understand your concerns that, oh, it's a slippery slope. Everything's a slippery slope, but we really do mean this. And that's why we have these meetings, if we start slipping down that slope, come on in here and tell us, hey, you're slipping. But the intention of this is genuinely to protect you.
All right, thanks Mayor, uh, just an opportunity to answer some of the questions. Uh, I guess let me emphasize, um, I stress that the, the, the regulations are not changing. Something very important is changing and that is these would be allowed in the city limits. Uh, that, that's the whole purpose for dropping the word rural. Because what we don't want is, we don't want confusion to exist, uh, where some people would say, well, you have a rural residential area in the city limits, you're almost saying by the title that it shouldn't be in the city limits. Uh, but that word i- isn't really necessary, okay? So, uh, we're not changing what's allowed, we are rebranding it to try to emphasize the fact that this could be in the city limits or it could be outside the city limits, that's not the point. State law says basically that land that can be annexed has to be urban or suburban in character. It's not supposed to be rural in character, but it goes on to emphasize, and there have been multiple court cases, that rural in character doesn't mean farmland. It, it, it means something else. And everyone who's in this business scratches our heads and says, well, it really ultimately ends up, you know, to a court. Some court's going to decide whether it's rural in nature or not. But again, from a staff perspective, I'm always going to be saying that for properties that are close to town, uh, may have some municipal services right now, might, might have access to public water, may not, probably don't have access to sewer right now, but we're planning for those kinds of things, that those properties, when they're developed as, developed as those owners want them to be, might be considered for annexation. So that's on the, on the rebranding side. Regarding dogs and cats and the fowl, great questions. I do think that's another area that needs to be addressed for specifically the transitional ag in these RE areas. We could easily do something very similar, that is, that you're going to have the, the, the dog limits or the, the number of animal limits on all of the zoning districts, but when it comes to TA and RE, because of the very nature of where they are and they're large lots, you know, those restrictions may not be necessary. Uh, and the fowl limitations then would be the exact same thing. So everything that's allowed today would continue to be allowed. The, the chicken permits would be for other zoning, you know, districts. And that's based on this one, you're automatically allowed in TA and RE.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Uh, Matt Heller, H E L L D R, 10583, County Road 29. I don't know if it's something to do with this or not, but it talks about, we're talking about, you know, changing these rules and changing some of the, not rules, but the name. So where I live is considered within a two mile, three mile radius of Blair. So I have, but I, I've got to follow a lot of city rules. I don't get a vote for certain things, the mayor for one thing, so is that something that if you're changing these names, does that give us more rights than inside the city? If I'm going to be in this bubble, do I have more rights? Yeah, do I have more rights then to vote for, um, representatives and things like that? That's part of this residential change or the name? And then again, is it a tax levy change and my taxes go up? Because they get changed from rural to this residential, because it's a different tax levy where we live for sure.
I don't think the assessor is going to value them any differently because nothing's changed as far as the nature.
It's the levy, it's the levy though, not the, that's the amount.
Again, if you're outside the city limits, we don't set your levy. If you're inside the city limits, you have the same levy as everyone else. The, the titles don't affect that at all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Having none, Judiciary Committee.
We did begun this, this was one time ago. Uh, we've been talking about this for quite a while and we, this makes sense to Mr. Banner's point. We're just trying to make it where folks already have critters out there in their farms, they can still have them. If they're, if they're now in the city limits, so that's, I mean, that's literally as simple as that. So, language change, we're a bit here and there, but, but, I think we're getting hung up on that, I don't think we need to, so. Any questions from the council? I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty-five eighty-seven.
An ordinance to amend the Blair Municipal Code, Chapter Six, Article Two, Section Six Dash Two Oh Two, Livestock, Ban for Municipality and Section Six Two Oh Two Dash One, Fowl Controlled Within Municipality. Process repealing all warrants, parts of warrants conflict therewith, providing when warrants shall be full force effect and published in banful form.
I move the statutory rule regarding reading on three different days, be suspended consideration of said ordinance. Senator, question?
The question for the council is, shall the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended? Please register your vote.
All council members present voting aye. An ordinance to amend the Blair Municipal Code, Chapter Six, Article Two, Section Six Dash Two Oh Two, Livestock, Ban for Municipality and Section Six Dash Two Oh Two Dash One, Fowl Controlled Within Municipality. Process repealing all warrants, parts of warrants conflict therewith, providing when warrants shall be full force effect and published in banful form.
I move the final passage of ordinance twenty-five eighty-seven. Senator, question?
The question for the council now is, shall ordinance number twenty-five eighty-seven be passed and adopted? Please register your vote.
All council members present voting aye. I declare ordinance number twenty-five eighty-seven duly adopted.
Item number twelve, consider resolution twenty-five dash seventy-five approving proposed right-of-way permits fees. Mr. Eaton?
I'm coming up, we're like, we're out.
It's time you speak CJ, they all have to leave.
Thank you for being here tonight, folks.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
We've got to be with the dog park people.
We're fighting the first round.
Have a good night, drive safely out there.
Scram for him?
Yep.
He's the city attorney.
We've got a couple more.
We ready? Wait there. Uh, Aaron, I think you have a slide on this. Two more. Thank you. So right-of-way permits and fees, so this is something staff has been working on, um, for probably a little over a year and been discussing internally. Uh, just a good way, what started out as a good way to track work that's going on in our right-of-way. So, um, thinking about COX cable coming in and putting fiber optic lines up and down every street in town. As you remember over the last few years, COX is in, Great Plains, um, Fastwire, all the various companies coming in. Uh, and it doesn't seem like that's slowing down necessarily. Um, well, what we've noticed over the last two years since all of this infrastructure was put in is that sloppy work is starting to show up, especially when we have big rain events like we had on Saturday. We, I got more calls for sinkholes and issues in yards, uh, Monday than I had in the last six months. But it has been an ongoing thing where we could constantly get calls, I have a sinkhole in my yard, it's right in line with the fiber optic box that COX or Fastwire put in a year ago. And so, the previous director of public works kind of had a system of his own to track some of these, but it wasn't really enforced, it wasn't marketed, it wasn't promoted, um, and it wasn't tracked very well. And so what I proposed and was in your Sparkback Plan was a right-of-way permit that we're going to try to put out, promote. I'm hoping we can tie it to the eight-one-one system, so when contractors and people call in, maybe there's a way we can flag it on there to alert people that they need to come pull a permit with the city so we can track this work. In our municipal code, it even requires that contractors doing work in the right-of-way contact the city and give permission. And it really does help us keep track of what's going in, it helps us keep tabs on, because they're going to be interfering with our future projects. Uh, I know we, COX cable has always been very good at calling about things like that and we avoided having good fiber lines through the other street lights in on Highway seventy-five Apollo Route. Um, the other thing that I'd like to be able to collect is just their insurance information because we've had several cases, um, two at least big ones that I've been here where over ten thousand dollars in damages was caused to a homeowner from a boring company putting lines through, like sewer lines or grounding cables through, plugging their sanitary sewer line. The contractor's long gone, six, twelve months later, that line's kind of backed up enough that it's plugged up and they have to get a plumber in to fix that. Um, we've also had city infrastructure that has been bored through. And so then we have holes in our sanitary system, we get a big rain, the water eases right through there, we have sinkholes. Um, so along with the insurance information, we also put in there that all of the contractors, all of their work would basically have a twenty-four month monitoring period. So anytime in that, twenty-four months after the work was done, if we have an issue, we know who we can call. Hey, you did this a year ago, we're having issues, get back here. Um, and then just to kind of cover our costs of tracking all of this, um, and have them put some skin in the game, um, I'm recommending fifty dollars a fee for a residential lot or a communication drop. A hundred dollars on the commercial, industrial, agricultural lots. And then the big issue would be, um, a hundred and fifty dollars for the first thousand linear feet, um, of communication or utility made trunk lines. So I think that's where we can really catch COX, some of these big companies, Verizon when they come into town, to start putting these, you know, keeping track of these permits and, um, putting, putting some fees to it. Um, and then there'd be a seventy-five dollar to any additional thousand feet or portion thereof. Um, and these fees are all in line with surrounding communities that are doing work like this. Some fees had a flat rate, this seemed to be more common where there was a lesser fee for just one-off things. Um, but then just, say Verizon came in, put new fiber throughout the whole town, they would be looking at a substantial fee to do that work. And then any work that we catch somebody doing, when they did come get a permit, would be double whatever their original permit fee would be. Any questions? Thank you, thanks.
Any comments from the public?
CJ, I got a quick, uh, you don't even have to come back. Are we average of what other communities are doing or are we a little higher than other ones? Are we lower? I mean, just?
This is pretty much average what other communities.
Okay.
It's, it's, I didn't want to.
We're not the highest or we're not the lowest.
Right.
I was just curious.
Bankrupt anybody or, you know, do anything like that, but just.
So this is something they're used to paying in other communities?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Transportation Committee.
Did meet on this, um, did bring up exactly what, um, council member Holson brought up as it's in line with the other cities out of town are doing and CJ confirmed it is. It just makes sense, I mean, um, I said with the sinkholes, with the other issues, um, that the city's going to be able to collect some off of this and hold them accountable for as well, there's shoddy work done, so we thought that was a great idea. Yep. There's no other concerns, I'd like to introduce Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash seventy-five.
Resolution number Twenty Twenty-five Dash Seventy-five was introduced by Councilmember Clark approving proposed right-of-way permit fees.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-five Dash Seventy-five as presented.
Senator?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five Dash Seventy-five. Please register your vote.
All council members present voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number thirteen, ordinance Twenty-five Eighty-nine approving a purchase agreement for the sale of vacated right-of-way to Thomas C White and his, uh, wife on South Fork Road. Mr. Byerman?
Good evening Mayor, good evening Council, Jeff Byer, the Community Development Director. Uh, this item and your next item, uh, Twenty-five Ninety, very similar to general, uh, like general common sense will apply to both. Of course, when it comes down to voting for each different, uh, tract to these different separate owners, we, of course, separate vote on that. Uh, right now we're talking about the South Fork Road stub. This is basically a stub of South Fork Road that at one time was going to lead into possibly another development. Located in this part of our town. You see right here, Highway thirty, South Fork Road coming up here, the church, David's Drive. At one time, this was left open as a stub, stub, uh, when, uh, the residents or the subdivisions were planted. We in hope that it would probably lead to something in here, Ostick connecting down with Clark Street on, on the bottom. Since then, this area here has been subdivided into its own subdivision and all the other parcels on here do have access under Clark Street, leaving this parcel right here owned by Mr. White, or Mr. White, was only access being that stub street out to South Fork Road. That's never going to be a street again, it will never probably, uh, unless for some reason that would be turned into a subdivision through planting or something like that, but that's not planned. So right now there's been a request and he's had one of this for a while, some sort of assurance that this street will not be closed off and he will be able to use it because it's his only access. In fact, in some ways we couldn't close it off, uh, because of that, uh, his only access. But to make it so it's variously guaranteed, they did, uh, council, they needed a couple of weeks ago to vote to vacate that entire right-of-way, that's fifty foot wide and then I think a hundred, uh, thirty-four people on this area. Uh, as part of our requirements, we had to approach all three owners who are on, uh, on each side of this property. We contacted Mr. Cheney here, Mr. White, and I forgot that one, but anyway. Uh, we did offer the two side, uh, properties ten feet. Mr. White was offering thirty feet because that is the minimum subdivision standard for a right-of-way. This owner right here decided that he did not want to buy ten feet of that. This owner, Mr. Cheney, said he did want to. So Mr. White decided to buy forty feet of the fifty-foot right-of-way. Now decided as, doesn't add, it's track day, this will give him his way into here. This would be all private property here, uh, right-of-way still out there. This will give him his way into here, this will be all private property here, right-of-way still out there. The remainder will go to Mr. Chaney on this area here. There is a contiguous partial agreement that will be signed with each of the Track A, Track B, to meet with our rules and also for the category there. Because we're creating, would be creating a non-buildable lot, basically a subpar lot, so they need to be connected right-of-way with their permit parcel. They could remain through a CPA or they could do orbit plan. So with that, any questions about Track A and the sale? I believe the price was determined by the, almost the real estate committee earlier, and that was what the set price went on that, 20% of that, over 15% for Mr. White, 20% from Mr. Chaney.
Any other questions for Mr. Byram? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Yeah, Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-W-S. What actually could be done with that lot? What is it?
It's going to be a residential lot.
It's a residential lot, substandard 40-foot by 100?
No, that's not a lot, that's the driveway. We're selling it to the adjoining property in order for his driveway.
You just showed sold, but the red lot?
That's because it adjoins his lot.
Is that not, that is what you're talking about, that piece, right?
That is just going to be the driveway for his residential lot.
So the... It's not a built-up lot, it's a driveway?
Yes.
That's all I was asking, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Having none, Finance Committee.
Did meet on this...
Let's forget.
While back.
We do.
Thought it made sense, it's something that we have to, so to speak, maintain, and it's a liability for us as a city, and it's not a useful property or something that we're going to do anything with. So it made sense to offer it to the Jason Almox. It's like compensation. So, there's no additional questions. I would like to introduce Ordinance 2589.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of property identified as Track A and Exhibit A located in South Fork Division, Boyer, Washington County, Nebraska, providing for notice of such sale to be published for three consecutive weeks immediately after passage of this ordinance, authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with Thomas and Sarah Whiteby, and to make all notifications required under Nebraska law statute 16-202, including notification of the right of remonstrance providing for all ordinance parts and warrants conflict therewith, providing that said warrants should be full force in effect following passage of publications required by law, ordinance ought to be published in pamphlet form.
I move the statutory rule regarding reading on three different days, we suspend for consideration of said ordinance.
Question before the council is, shall the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended? Please register your votes.
All council members present voting aye. An ordinance authorizing the sale of property identified as Track A and Exhibit A located in South Fork Division, Boyer, Washington County, Nebraska, providing for notice of such sale to be published for three consecutive weeks immediately after passage of this ordinance, authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with Thomas and Sarah Whiteby, and to make all notifications required under Nebraska law statute 16-202, including notification of the right of remonstrance providing for all ordinance parts and warrants conflict therewith to be repealed, providing that said warrants should be full force in effect following passage of publications required by law, ordinance ought to be published in pamphlet form.
I move the final passage, Ordinance 2589, second. Rusher.
The question now before the council is, shall ordinance number 2589 be passed and adopted? Please register your votes. All council members present voting aye. Orderance number 2589 duly adopted. Item number 14, Ordinance 2590 approving a purchase agreement for the sale of vacated right-of-way to Kelly R. Chaney and Carol A. Chaney on South Fork Road. Mr. Byram?
Thank you again. So again, a statement of general comments on this. We thought South Fork Sub Road, basically vacated so it can be later sold. Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Sorry about my apologies, has also wanted to buy 10 feet of that. He's taken care of it for quite a while. This gives him a little bit more breathing room on that west side. Probably should explain what a contiguous partial agreement is for everybody in the audience, or if anybody's listening. The contiguous partial agreement is a non, I won't say non-refundable, it's... Once you make this agreement, when you have two parcels that are contiguous to each other, and they're owned by the same person, they can be entered into this contract with the city that says these are now looked at as one lot, and the interior lot line is not considered as part of the building. But it also says, once these are joined together, you cannot unjoin them. So what this happens is, well enough, they want to replat later on, and many people do, because they're still two tax lots. Many people sometimes decide to replat, others leave it as just two different lots. But once you enter into this agreement with the city, the contiguous partial agreement or CPA is binding, and you have that lot forever. Any questions for that?
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Having none, Finance Committee is up on deck again.
Got a ditto, the same thing, it's just the other portion of it. So I'd like to introduce Ordinance 2590.
An ordinance authorizing the sale of property identified as Track B and Exhibit A located in South Fork Division, Boyer, Washington County, Nebraska, providing for notice of such sale to be published for three consecutive weeks immediately after passage of this ordinance, authorizing the mayor enter into a purchase agreement with Kelly and Carol Chaney, via emptying out notifications required under Nebraska law statute 16-202, including notification of the right of remonstrance providing for all ordinance parts and warrants conflict therewith to be repealed, providing that said warrants should be full force in effect following passage of publications required by law, ordinance ought to be published in pamphlet form.
Move the statutory rule regarding reading on three different days, we suspend for consideration of said ordinance. Question?
Question for the council is, shall statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended? Please register your votes.
All council members present voting aye. An ordinance authorizing the sale of property identified as Track B and Exhibit A located in South Fork Division, Boyer, Washington County, Nebraska, providing for notice of such sale to be published for three consecutive weeks immediately after the passage of this ordinance, authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with Kelly and Carol Chaney, via emptying out notifications required under Nebraska law statute 16-202, including notification of the right of remonstrance providing for all ordinance parts and warrants conflict therewith and repealed, and providing that said warrants should be full force in effect following passage of publications required by law, ordinance ought to be published in pamphlet form.
I move the final passage, Ordinance 2590. Second. Question?
The question for the council now is, shall ordinance number 2590 be passed and adopted? Please register your votes.
All council members present voting aye.
I declare ordinance number 2590 duly adopted. Item number 15, Consider Resolution 2025-76 approving the purchase of a utility dump truck from Woodhouse.
I'd like to make a motion to receive or place on file the bids for the utility dump truck.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to receive or place on file the bids for the utility dump truck. Please register your votes.
All council members present voting aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I have a slight anxiety for prices. By every reason, I was going to run through this. This dump truck has been in the budget almost a year now, so it's in this current year's budget. I know this is something the utility department has been asking for several years. This would be a smaller dump truck, not a very big truck that they use for salting, sanding roads. What they would, the main purpose for this truck would be to use during watering breaks, especially during winter when all of the plow equipment, the salt and sanding equipment's attached to the big dump trucks. We can keep those trucks clean, ready to do that. Often when we have a waterline break, all of that equipment has to come off so that they can haul this wet, muddy, mucky stuff out, and then bring in fresh fiddle. So that's one kind of main purpose, the main reason they asked for this, but there's also obviously many other uses. So it's not, it's just going to sit there until there's a waterline break. Obviously, with all the tree branches on the streets right now, it would be put to use immediately. The utility guys collected five bids, and they're listed there, so we had two 26s, $90, $95,000 ballpark, and then three 2024 pickups. Two of the Silverados are at Sid Delance. While they have a little lower price than the one I want to recommend, they currently, right now, have recalls on them, and they won't be sold until those recalls get cleared, which they told Terry that that could be in October before all that gets done. In addition to that, those trucks are just a cabin chassis right now. They would have to have the utility box put on, the dump box put on, and that would take some time also. So the reason I'm recommending the 2024 Ram from Woodhouse is that that truck, we told the department needs. It has been sitting on the lot at Woodhouse for at least six weeks, and I'm aware of it right now, that we've been kind of looking at it. So they, we went back and forth with them, got it down to a price of $82,799. That's out the door, the price of the truck and all the dock fees. So, that's my recommendation. I know it's not the cheapest one, but it also is available now, this will be here. And it meets all of our needs, there's no recalls or anything like that. Any questions? I believe we have budgeted 95 for 90, 90 or 95, so we should be under budget.
CJ, is the 24 still a new vehicle?
It's a very new vehicle, no miles, but it is a 24.
Can it be outfitted to be used as, for snow removal?
Yeah, it could be. We didn't plan on that right now, but it could be.
It's always nice if you've got that extra capability, if you need another truck brakes or something, then...
Any other questions for Mr. Heaton?
Does this one have a dump box on it at this point?
Yes.
It does already have a dump?
Dump box on it, all ready to go, so if approved, this is soon as, ready to be picked up.
Thank you.
Thanks, CJ.
Any comments from the public? Having none, Transportation Committee.
Yeah, we did meet on this, made sense. Like CJ mentioned, just want to point out, technically it wasn't the lowest bid, but the two Silverados that were the lowest bids, you know, have the boxes to be put on, there are actually other recalls, so I don't know if they can be sold. So, we thought it was a good idea. So if there's no questions, I'll introduce Resolution 2025-76.
Resolution number 2025-76 was introduced by Councilmember Letcher approving the purchase of a utility dump truck from Woodhouse.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-76 as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number 2025-76. Please register your votes.
All council members present voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number 16, Consider Resolution 2025-77 to affirm the construction contract for Honeybee Lane between Lexa Construction Company and Metonic Real Estate. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor. This is regarding the Blair Crossing, pardon my name. And as you recall, the public infrastructure that's being put in, both for Honeybee Lane as well as the highway improvements, are being done by a contractor that was hired by the actual developer, not by us. So oftentimes, we're the ones that would hire them, we would be the ones that would be both reviewing the plans. We had looked at these plans previously, we had brought them to the council, you have previously approved these plans, and so all of the public improvements are being done according to our, at minimum, our construction standards. This is just a contract now that ultimately came back from the bidding that they did, and they were excited, and we're very excited, to see a local company, Lexa Construction, be the ones that are installing both Honeybee Lane as well as doing the highway improvements. We had originally budgeted, or estimated, I should say, about $3.2 million for the overall cost. Now that includes more than just this work, it includes some of the power line relocations that are being done, so it's several hundred thousand dollars just for some of that work. But we anticipate right now that this is approximately $500,000 under budget, which is good. Our developers' agreement with Metonic is that 75% of that cost savings comes back to us, 25% goes to them, because that's roughly the ratio of the public improvements. So what we're asking tonight is for you just to affirm this as the low bidder and the recommendation from the engineer so that they can proceed. Any questions?
Where, I'm sorry, where exactly is Honeybee Lane going to be?
Yeah, so if you recall, down there where the roundabout is, and you may not have seen all the drawings in the past, I don't know, it's probably laid out, yeah, I suppose there you go.
Okay, okay.
So it shows it, wrapping through, this is the right-of-way, so obviously the street goes inside of that. Some of this right-of-way is extra wide, because we anticipate when this land then gets developed sometime in the future, we're going to add an additional lane to Honeybee Lane and make it a three-lane road, so that when you are in there and turning left, you'll have a left-hand turn lane to be able to get into and not impede traffic flowing in on both directions, on both sides.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
Do you have a diagram that's up, please? So I'm certified in ICC Building Inspector Plans, et cetera.
I'm so sorry, could you identify yourself, name, last name, spell and address?
I've been up three times, I'll do that. Matthews, F-A-T-T-H-W-S, 739th or 16th Street. Is that correct, my boy?
If you smile off, you're going to leave, okay?
I'm just clarifying. So my question goes back to, what happens to pedestrians? Nothing is in any of these documents that addresses pedestrian access from that point, from those apartments, back into town. There's no sidewalks, you're messing with the actual flow of traffic of the roundabout. You're going to, by doing a turn lane halfway down the hill, you're going to impede this, you're going to have to impede the traffic coming down over the hill, over a white hill, to look for traffic crossing in front of you. So now that's going to be a 30 mile an hour road, starting at the top. That's okay, but you're going to have a lot of people that don't live around here, not familiar with that. And that's going to cause a lot of potential accidents. There should be some type of crossover, either coming from 23rd Avenue that crosses over into that subdivision that you reach from that further out, so that you have clear traffic going into where the apartments are, not affecting the roundabout in any fashion. And you also have access now to all those properties that are along the highway to have business access on the inside on 23rd Avenue. So there needs to be a little bit more deeper investigation into the future of how this goes. A nice road coming back through, that crosses over, has no effect on the highway at all now, and gives pedestrians a chance to get back into town, to get into the sidewalks. Could be done right there where that point comes up, tied into the road, where Honeybee Lane comes in. You may have to take a little bit more property that's outside the city limits at this moment to include it, but a bridge is going to be what you need in order for people to access this. So further investigation needs to be done. Department of Transportation is going to be curious as to how you address the crossing over the highway. So, has that all been done, is already, are they been approved by the Department of Transportation for this access?
We are looking on that right now.
Well, you're working on it.
I appreciate your concern for the pedestrians, Mr. Matthews, but that is not what the agenda item tonight is about. It's about Honeybee Lane and the agreement between Lexa Construction and Metonic Real Estate.
Thank you.
But thank you for your concern. Any other comments from the public? Transportation Committee.
Just good evening on this, and we are very glad that it's a local company to do it. So with that, I'll introduce Resolution 2025-77.
Resolution number 2025-77 was introduced by Councilmember Wolf to affirm the construction contract for Honeybee Lane between Lexa Construction and Metonic Real Estate.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-77 as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number 2025-77. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash seventy-seven. Please register your vote. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Mr. Green, do you have anything else?
Oh, you know me better than that, yeah, we're doing that, uh, and, and this is important to say, uh, I can't say enough wonderful things about the response of our Blair employees regarding Saturday's storm, they stepped up, they worked hard, they devoted themselves, they came out when their own houses had roofs and, uh, that had been broken, uh, you know, water pouring in, basements that had been flooded, and they came out to help and serve, uh, the fire department did an incredible, incredible, uh, run of calls that day, uh, I mean, they would make, uh, a lot of paid departments pants, uh, and looking at all the effort that they did, so, greatly appreciate everything that everyone did, uh, the first round of debris cleanup is going on right now, depending on how long it takes, uh, we'll be doing a second round, now CJ, what would you estimate percentage-wise, if they were through, maybe ten, fifteen percent?
Maybe a little more than that, I think they got through the northeast corner of town, I guess the quadrant, um, kind of working up there today.
Okay, so, so hypothetically, if they would get done with the first round this week, uh, you know, prior to the weekend, then, um, we would enter into the second round sometime next week, now what we can tell you is, and we've shared this on social media, we'll give at least a minimum of five days' notice before we start that second round, that's always important, because people panic, when they see them come through and pick up branches, thinking, oh, I'm not quite done yet, and I need to win, and so, we'll make sure that there's at least five days' notice, and hopefully a weekend prior to when we start one of those, uh, so if we don't get done this week, they'll have this weekend to put out anything that's there right now, in their pile, we'll pick it up, they'll have at least through the following weekend, before we would start round two, uh, and make our way around town, uh, but, a lot, a lot of stuff to, to clean up, depending upon how slow it is taking our crew, we may end up having to hire some other contractors, and they've already reached out to us and offered their services, to, to help with all of this cleanup. This most recent storm and emergency also showed us, I think, a weakness in several of our key facilities, um, City Hall was without power, and we couldn't do anything, uh, you know, I had these two lovely ladies, uh, come in, specifically to help answer all the phone calls that would be coming in, but, with no power, there's no phone, uh, and so, they helped with some of the emergency communication, that needed to go out that day, uh, they helped with some other odds and ends, but, we, we had no power here, we had no power over the police department, um, and thankfully, Tom White is an amazing guy, and he brought his own generator over and plugged it in. He brought his own generator over and worked diligently to get Wi-Fi back up again, to get other things functioning, so that we could at least have, uh, some functionality going on over the police department, we had pulled back together as kind of our, uh, ad hoc emergency operations center, um, and that's caused us to reconsider, kind of, what we want to do in the midst of disasters, uh, because we were fortunate to only be without power here at City Hall and FPD for two days, uh, what if it was a week, you know, and how would we function, so, I'm letting you know right now, I'm gonna be revising the budget a little bit, to at least put some money in there, so that we can do some detailed plans and design for fully getting backup generation power, both here at City Hall, as well as over the police department.
Yeah, the fire department.
Uh, yeah, and the fire departments, most of them have some power, so that they get their doors open up.
Street means of two.
The street, well, that's true, yeah, there, there's multiple facilities that we have to do, uh, yeah, and, and we've, we had some problems and hiccups with some of the backup power that we do have at the water plant, and so, there's just several things to kind of test, but, uh, you know, these disasters show your weaknesses, uh, and you gotta just be smart, and then jump on them when you get those opportunities, so, we're gonna be doing that, I'm not saying we're gonna get it done this year, we'll get the designs done this year, we'll find out exactly what it's going to take, uh, I lived through one of these, when civilian city hall got completely gutted and rebuilt, it's not an easy project to do, uh, to, to change all your, uh, electrical source, uh, but, we need to know what that's going to cost us, and, uh, and we'll try to get that done this year, uh, speaking of the budget, the preliminary budget will be presented two weeks from tonight, so again, we had the workshop earlier, where we talked about things, what you're gonna get on August twenty-sixth is the preliminary budget, then final approval will be at that very first council meeting on the second Tuesday in September, on September ninth, now is the time for you to be letting me know what your priorities are, if there's certain changes, some that we have already, appreciate that, we're gonna be incorporating all those, you'll see that rolled out in two weeks, but now's the time for, for me to know what's going on, and, sometime next week, we would anticipate we'll learn what the county assessor's valuation for the city blower is, and what our real growth indicator is, and that will help a lot to determine whether we can kind of move forward on the current path, or whether we need to pull back even a little bit more, so, lots of activities happening in the next few weeks, but please, please let me know what your priorities are, any questions you have for me?
Have they brought the grinder in yet, down by the recycling, to start grinding?
Yeah, he just got in today, I think it was.
Yeah, he started today.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, we're, we're, I know some people have asked about our two alternate temporary piles, you know, I always chuckle for a town like Blair, that how quickly we moved to get ultimate, all, ultimate sites set up, and the fact that they're going to remain set up until we're done, and Omaha, you know, had one, and it shut it down after two days, you know, it's, it's making sense at all, but, uh, but those sites are still available, people can still utilize those, that's good, and then CJ, uh, would you come up and give them an update on the traffic signals for Highway seventy-five, uh, again, we haven't gotten official word, but, at least they're hinting in the right directions.
Should've made Rich Selinsky stay here until we-
Yeah.
We settled that.
Could've held him hostage, yeah.
Uh, so, some, some promising news, I guess, we, this, uh, hired FHU, the designers, designed the whole bypass to do an independent, uh, traffic count and study of the intersection, and also do a follow-up one on the, uh, Highway thirty, uh, Hollow Road intersection on the side, uh, that study came back and confirmed that we met all of the warrants, and so, I got that about a week ago, I submitted that to NDOT, um, right when I got it, and I got a, promptly got an email back that the gentleman was, I don't know, vacation, and so, uh, I'm sure, he's been, you know, after you've been gone for a while, you get a ton of stuff, I haven't really taken back from him, uh, I gave it a day or so more, and don't reach out to me, that's good news, um, right now, the last update I had is that the poles and the mast arms should be here on August twenty-fifth, and so, we're, if that date holds firm, I'll let you know if that changes, um, we're anticipating right now, everything going to plan, and the weather's good, that we'll turn those lights on October first, or by October first, um, so everything we've heard from NDOT, even with their, their warrants, or their study saying we haven't quite met the warrant yet, is that they fully anticipated meeting those by the time this all got done, and to continue what anticipates to term, so, right now, we're moving forward, we're gonna have these lights up and running, and, you know, I, I kinda joke, Rich Selinsky works for Nebraska Department of Transportation as a project manager, um, and has been on the bypass project, um, and so every conversation I've had with him about that is, we haven't been told otherwise, we're turning these things on, we're not gonna put them up, just put bags over them, so, October one is kind of our shoot before date right now, I'll let you know with James.
Thank you.
Thank you, CJ.
Very good. Very good. All right.
I motion adjourned this meeting of the Blair City Council.
A second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn, please register your vote.
Hi, Phil, if you vote no.
You know, that was the only no this entire night.
Somebody wanna know? Letcher, Letcher.
The only no.
He's Letcher.